Good evening and welcome. I'm Mayor Dean Brooke and this is Durango City Council Regular Session, February 16th, 2021. With that, I'd like to open this meeting and call for a roll call, please.
Counselor Bettin?
Here.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Present.
Counselor Youssef?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Present.
And Mayor Brooke?
Here. Thank you very much, Amy. I appreciate that. And with that, I'd like to have any member of City Council identify any actual or perceived conflicts of interest for any of the items on the agenda this evening. Seeing none, we'll move on to item four of our meeting, which is public participation. Public participation is intended to allow the public to have a three-minute opportunity to address council and regarding any item that's not otherwise agendized on our meeting this evening. If so, if it's a comment related to anything that is on our agenda, we'd like to have your public testimony at that appropriate time. So if you can wait if it's for a particular topic. But to keep our moving along, we are limiting comments to three minutes and we have an eye, keep an eye on our moderator. Their video feed will show your time remaining. To enter the discussion this evening, please use the raised hand function if you're using the Zoom app to indicate you would like to provide a comment. It's that easy. If you are calling into the meeting using your telephone, press star nine to raise your hand and our moderator will let you into the meeting and then push star six to unmute. Our moderator will announce the next person to speak and will ask you to unmute yourself at that time. I would like to remind you with everybody to be civil in this public forum. We encourage everyone to express their views and opinions, but ask that you do so in a respectful manner, free of explicit or derogatory language. To begin, please state your first and last name for the record. With that, Mitchell, do we have our first participant?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So far, no one has raised their hand. Oh, we got our first one. Here we go. Lisa, it is your turn to speak. Please give us your first and last name for the record and whether or not you are a city resident and you have three minutes.
Thank you. This is Lisa. Can you hear me?
We sure can, Lisa. Thank you.
Great. My name is Lisa McCurry. I am a city resident in Durango and I wanted to support and applaud the naming and renaming of Trails and Streets. Thank you for looking at this and addressing this to the staff and council that are working on that, repairing the health of cross-racial relationships in the areas long overdue. And I hope we continue to think about how allocation of resources and monies can reflect these efforts even beyond the renaming. You know, can we commit to commission more local Indigenous American Indian artists for public art installations and include a cross-section of the community in the Creative Economy District work, for example? Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. McCurry. I appreciate that. And Mitchell, do we have any others wishing to speak to the council this evening?
No one else has raised their hand. We do have quite a few in the attendee list. If you are here to speak during public participation, now is your opportunity. Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody else.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Mitchell. And with that, we'll move on to item five of our agenda, which is 5.1 is the welcoming introduction of Patrick Sharp, CEO, the new CEO of Mercy Hospital. Unfortunately, Mr. Sharp has had to, had another conflict this evening, so he won't be joining us and we hope to reschedule him as soon as possible to introduce him to our community. With that, we move on to item 5.2, which is the Bureau of Land Management and City of Durango Fire Mitigation Presentation. So if I can have our city manager, Jose Madrigal, introduce our guests, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely. Mayor and council, we have Amy Schorsbach and Ian Barrett here for a presentation. This is in line with and in conjunction with item 6.5 on the consent agenda item. Just wanted to give a presentation with, to the council and the public of a little background on this grant application.
Excellent.
Mitchell, if we could have our presentation, please? Great. So thank you for this opportunity to inform you of the joint fire mitigation work between the city and the city's largest adjacent landowner and neighbor. That would be the Bureau of Land Management. The BLM is a collaborating partner in our fire-adapted Durango partnership, but we want to take this opportunity to speak a little bit more to the broader-reaching partnership that the city has with the BLM. And joining me is Ian Barrett. Ian is the Acting Fuels Program Lead for the BLM at the state office. Next slide, please. So as Jose mentioned, we are here to inform you about the BLM grant award that the city just received. That is a grant that the city submitted last year in support of the fire-adapted Durango Partnership fire mitigation work we've all been hearing about. It's a wonderful funding opportunity. This grant award is for a four-year duration. $87,500 are available upon approval by city council. This grant award required no cash match from the city and it allows us to modify the grant each year for up to $250,000 pending the availability of federal funds. So we'll be coming back to you with the partnership on March 9th to give full project details of what the 2021 project has in store and how we'll be using those $87,500. Next slide. I'm going to have Ian join me now and explain some more opportunities that the city has in partnering with the BLM to conduct fire mitigation on city-owned land.
Thanks, Amy. Good evening, everybody. So we've been in discussions about possibly seeking out to enter into an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, in order to bring treatments from either the city or the BLM across boundaries onto adjacent land of each other. So it is somewhat common, but not ultra-common. Under the Good Neighbor Authority, assuming that we've met all the regulations and federal planning requirements, we could potentially extend a fuels treatment across boundaries or vice versa. And it would improve the process and the cohesiveness of these treatments. So unless there's any questions, and we can come back to that later, I think we could go into the next slide. And Amy, I'll continue if you'd like. So on Amy's map here, you can see the city lands in the olive green and then the brown is BLM. Overlay it onto the brown, you're going to see a green for a potential new treatment area and then a purple for a previously-treated area. So you will notice around Durango, there has been extensive fuels treatment by the BLM. That's occurred over the last 20 years. A lot of this work was post-national fire plan. So the national fire plan came about in 2000 and then really was rolled out in 2000, going on in 2002. And it involved a cohesive strategy, which I'll get to in a second why that's significant. But a lot of these efforts started then and are continuing today. So recently, we did complete an environmental assessment where we analyzed the 23,000 acres of BLM land in La Plata County. We identified 5,800 acres that was previously treated that would be eligible for re-treatment using a variety of methods based on the site conditions and the fuels present. So going back to the cohesive strategy and where the grant came from, part of that strategy was the acknowledgement that fire doesn't respect boundaries and it'll carry from federal land to private or to a city or vice versa. So the federal government identified a need to really invest in our neighboring lands and to assist folks with that work. So what spawned was community assistance agreements and grants. And that's what the city has applied for and been awarded if it accepts it, is community assistance. So Amy, do you want to carry on with that or is that a good intro into?
I think that's great. Tonight's opportunity really was to have Ian present. I know recently Mayor Brooke had asked what's going on on adjacent land, so this was a wonderful opportunity to have Ian join us and show this map and show how fire mitigation is a responsibility of our adjacent landowners and that the EA is in the works for BLM to be working at the same time the city is on those larger adjacent properties as well as partnering with us on our partnership work inside city limits.
Sure. And I can speak on that. My role, since there are quite a few ethical parameters of BLM involvement on these agreements and what I can provide is technical expertise to Amy and to the city, all the folks in the partnership. So I'm not as familiar with all the inner workings of the agreement, but it, you know, it's really a grant to you guys and through the application, it was spelled out, you know, what it would be for and we worked that through a pretty extensive process. So I'm here to help out in any way. In terms of the BLM efforts, the environmental assessment did outline, you know, a little bit of a complete schedule of all of the areas we'll be approaching, the methodology, et cetera. So I think I saw a question if we're going there.
Yes, thank you.
I believe this is the last slide.
Okay. I didn't know if you were finished with slides. Could you please describe how this complements or competes with the work that Chief Doughty presented to us, the six miles that he felt were most critical that we addressed in a fire mitigation effort?
Sure. Amy, do you want to take that or I can answer it from just one of the partners?
Why don't you start and I'll jump in if there's anything left over?
Okay. So the fire adaptive partnership spawned, I think we were sitting in city council and we all could meet in person and a few of the county, excuse me, members from the Board of County Commissioners, La Plata County were there and there was a call to action post-416 fire. And that was the impetus. From there, we went into a larger-scale mapping effort that was fairly rudimentary. From that, the partnership has since scaled down and fine-tuned that to approximately six miles. So that's what she's referring to. And, you know, as one of the partners, they've been assisting in moving this along. You know, this is an effort that's going to take everyone in our community. It's going to take all the municipalities. It's going to take our county. It's going to take the BLM and then other federal partners to really evolve Durango and the surrounding area to have a good outcome from a wildfire event.
So you're saying this augments the work, but it doesn't replace the proposed actions that the chief presented to us a couple of weeks ago? I guess if I can join in, the six miles are what the partnership has identified and that did start with Ian and I sitting at this desk to go through. So there's a bit of redundancy maybe is a better way to say that because that is what this grant award is for, is to mitigate in 2021 those six miles. You can take care of six miles in one year? That's the plan, but we intend to bring the full, we've been doing groundproofing and so the March 9th plan is to speak to a greater extent of details, but if you'd like to weigh in, Ian?
I have full confidence Amy can do that effort this year with the support of, you know, it's going to take other elements within the city government to facilitate that kind of action, you know, contracting and, you know, all the different mechanisms to get that in place. But I think she's well along the way. Last year was a, you know, definitely a formation year, if you will. There were some hard lessons learned and I think that, you know, those are common when you start a new program, especially doing fuels mitigation work, it can be pretty challenging. And, I mean, from community outreach and engagement to, you know, treatment methods being better here and there, I do believe that they're, you know, they're poised to be able to execute that.
Counselor Noseworthy, if I may, I did reach out to Chief Doughty today and did speak with him about this plan and he did express that he did, this plan did have his support. He did have a meeting with Kathy and Amber beforehand and he understood a little bit of, or he stood, he understood kind of where this was going and he said it does have his support. He understands that this is with what BLM was able to offer was the way to go. There was a little bit of complication with his proposal when looking at that we might have had to go out to bid. That did give him a little bit of concern and especially specifically with competing with the private sector. So he said after taking all of those into consideration that he did see the value in this and he was supportive of this and thought that this would be a good step for this year.
Thank you. Thank you for that feedback. My biggest concern is getting it done in two years because I firmly believe we have to address this aggressively. And so I would be, I appreciate the grant, but I'd be looking at what's the accountability for achieving this goal in a two-year period? And I think it's important to recognize that fire mitigation is ongoing and in the wooi specifically after groundproofing, it's not one-size-fits-all for treatment. So our wooi is very diverse in what the terrain is and what the methods will be. But again, that's why we're coming back in March is to discuss that at greater detail. And thank you, Amy. This is my last comment is I do understand it's ongoing, but the initial effort was to do a big surge and then over time, continue with the maintenance of that fire mitigation. So that's my biggest concern is not having this drag out to a mile a year, which I love the accomplishments that have been taking place and I loved hearing it, just making certain that we can do a surge to get this taken care of the most concerning six miles that leave us the most vulnerable, addressing that and then recognizing we'll need to budget for ongoing maintenance of our fire mitigation efforts. And I applaud you for the grant. My biggest concern is getting it done for the protection of our community.
Any other comments from councilors?
Yes, I actually have one. We've been dealing also, working with the Southwest Impact Fund for, you know, more fire mitigation efforts. So this is a hot topic, if you will, pun not intended, but it is definitely an issue of concern for region-wide. And so this is another issue that I intend, hope to bring up today under new business, but I just wanted to mention that this is another avenue that region-wide, they're looking at fire mitigation and an authority, establishing an authority to actually fund some of this work that is very powerful because they recognize that it, like you were saying, Ian, fire does not respect boundaries. And so as we saw very well with the 416 fire. So I look forward to bringing that up in new business.
Thank you, Melissa. Any other comments? If not, I have a final thought. Chris or Counselor Baxter? Okay. You know, thank you, Barbara, for bringing up the timetable and, you know, I think the slide that was presented with the mapping was a little confusing relative to the six-mile plan that we saw previously, obviously. So, because it didn't really represent that. What I saw on that particular map was the good effort that was been accomplished in the past by BLM, specifically Animus Mountain and some areas up east of Horse Gulch. And so what I gleaned from that map was the work that's already been done by the BLM and efforts, the significant efforts I might add that are, have been accomplished to date. And so that, and then that's sort of disassociated with this grant, thank you very much, Ian, from the BLM, which just adds to the partnership to accomplish all those tasks that have been discussed in the most expeditious timeframe. And we couldn't do it as fast as we might be able to otherwise do it if we didn't have your money. So thanks for that as far as I can tell. This grant is a great opportunity. So any other thoughts before we move on? Thank you, Amy and Ian. Appreciate your time at this point and sharing your thoughts with us and it looks like we'll have an opportunity to take action a little bit later in the agenda. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
For that presentation.
Thanks for having us.
You bet. With that, we move on to item six, which is review of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a list of items that are either routine or non-controversial in nature and for council to take action without further discussion. We will have a reading of the consent agenda, then we will ask councilors if there's any particular items that they would like to have removed from the consent agenda for further discussion. And so with that, I'd like to ask Ms. Phillips to read the consent agenda for us.
Certainly. Item 6.1 is approval of the minutes for the January 5th, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting. 6.2, this item has been removed. 6.3 through 6.5 are discussion and possible action items. 6.3, concerns resolution R2021-6 authorizing an additional appropriation for the Gray and Black Market Marijuana Enforcement Grant Program Award that will close by June 30th, 2022. 6.4, concerns an implied consent agreement for 739 Oso Grande Drive in Palaberte subdivision. 6.5, concerns resolution R2021-7 authorizing an additional appropriation to the Open Space Parks and Trails Fund for a Bureau of Land Management Grant for Fire Mitigation.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. And did I understand correctly that 6.2, which is just approval of the minutes of the January 26th meeting, has been removed?
Yes, that's correct. Those were not posted in time for y'all to be able to review them.
Okay. So now I'd like to ask any member of the city council if they would like to remove an item from the consent agenda for further discussion this evening. Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Counselor Bettin?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Brooke?
Yes, thank you so much. With that, we'll move on to agenda item nine, which is public hearings, in this case legislative and policy-related hearings, specifically 9.1.1, which is a public hearing to consider text amendments to the Land Use and Development Code, specifically to Chapter Three, lots, buildings and structures, and Chapter Five, Site Design and Natural Resources. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Scott Shine, Planning Manager for the City of Durango. And we have some text amendments to our land use and development code related to parking and trash enclosures. And typically you wouldn't think that's very exciting, but we are very excited to be here tonight because it's a direct way to implement a number of overarching plans that the city's adopted in recent years, including the updated comprehensive plan and the 2018 housing plan. So we're excited to share that with you. I have some slides that Mitchell is going to share here and we'll walk through this together. So next slide. So I highlighted what these amendments to our development standards are about. I'll get into more detail on that in a little bit, but I also want to emphasize the process that these amendments have been through so far. And this is a outcome of the Code Alignment Working Group that city council established that's comprised of various members of boards and commissions, the Planning Commission, Board of Adjustments, Design Review Board, Multimodal Advisory Board are all represented on the Code Alignment Working Group. And then it went to Planning Commission per the typical process for text amendments to the Land Use and Development Code. On the next slide, you can see the design of the code alignment process and the working group that's helping staff advance these code amendments. The idea of aligning our very specific development standards with the overarching policy statements, the aspirations that are contained in documents like the comprehensive plan, city council goals, the housing plan, the character district plans. We can have all the great language in there and aspirations that we want, but if they don't translate into the very real and tangible development standards, we won't be able to achieve those aspirations. And so the design of the code alignment process is to make sure those are in sync and working together for those identified community priorities. So we had one set of amendments that came to you, I think in September of last year, to our Vacation Row Program. This is the second big set of amendments that's coming out of this process. And this is really a team effort, multiple staff members from community development and other departments are involved, along with all those working group members I mentioned. So the next slide, we'll start to get into the details of what's being proposed. The parking standards that we have really impact the built environment, how it's designed, how space is used in the community, how buildings and sites are laid out. Obviously, the amount of impervious area on a site which relates to environmental quality, stormwater standards. So while parking is not the most glamorous sort of aspect of site design, it has dramatic impacts on the overall built environment in the community. So we stepped back and we looked with the Code Alignment Working Group and said, what do we really want to accomplish when we look at our parking standards? And first and foremost, we wanted to right-size our multifamily parking requirements. The housing plan identifies infill projects. It identifies higher-density housing opportunities in walkable locations as a high priority and as a way to address the housing needs in our community. And so we wanted to make sure the requirements for parking in those types of projects was as tight as it could be and as helpful in achieving those goals. So that was the first overarching objective. We also wanted to expand our enhanced multimodal area. I'll talk more about that, but that is an area in the community that has good access to multimodal facilities like our river trail, bike trails, sidewalks, transit service, and those areas therefore qualify for a reduced parking standard. And we thought there were more areas in our community that met those criteria. So we're going to be updating the map for that enhanced multimodal area. We also wanted to simplify our parking calculations by merging some of the different districts in the community and having fewer, less variety in how parking calculations are found out. We wanted to adjust some known problem areas. So this LEDC was adopted in 2014. As we've been implementing it, as we've been applying it to projects, we've uncovered a few problem areas. And so those are mainly cleanups and we wanted to take this opportunity to do that. And then lastly, this was really at the direction of the Code Alignment Working Group. They wanted to see the parking standards start to address the emerging technology of electric vehicles and start to prepare for that technology and get new development ready. So they directed staff to look into how other communities are doing that and we've provided some initial recommendations. We think we're going to need to do more in this area in the near future, but what we wanted to do is take this opportunity to get sort of the framework in place for how we're going to treat EV parking requirements. So those are the overall goals. On the next slide, we had a pretty rigorous methodology for how we wanted to determine what our recommendations are going to be, particularly around multifamily parking because if we don't get this right, it can have impacts on adjacent properties, can have impacts on neighborhoods, on street function, on... if we don't get this right, it can have impacts on adjacent properties, can have impacts on, on neighborhoods, on street function, on service provision, like snow plowing or, or trash pickup. It has overflow effect. So we wanted to make sure we were doing our due diligence and making solid recommendations. So after we identified those goals, our staff did some pretty exhaustive research on other communities and, and a lot of that was included in your packet. We looked at how we compared with communities that are about the same size, same conditions, same sort of general community character as us. And I'll share some of the results of that research with you. Then we also looked at recent projects in Durango and we said, you know, how are those performing? If they applied our current parking standards, we went out, we looked at night when, you know, residential parking demand is, is at the highest. And we, we noticed a lot of vacancy of parking spaces. So as we were looking at these recent projects, we really determined that we needed to make some changes. So next slide. So I know this table is small, but it's also in your packet. And I think the, the quote there on the side really highlights the, the overall findings. And I'd like to credit Mark Williams on our, on our staff for doing this research and, and demonstrating that in the realm of multifamily parking, Durango's standards were really sort of excessive. We were the highest or tied for the highest in seventy two out of seventy eight instances when looking at comparable communities. So right there, that told us that you know, while, while Durango likes to excel in a lot of ways, and we, we strive for that, we didn't want to be requiring excess amounts of parking. So that was our first indication we needed to adjust. And then next slide just has some images of recent projects and, and shows how underutilized some of these parking lots are. And I'll, I'll share with you sort of a hypothetical project and what the impact can be when we right size these requirements, how it can free up space for different uses, how it can also enable the creation of more housing units. So next slide, based on all that research and observations, we came up with these, these recommended adjustments to our multifamily parking requirements. And you can see studios go down to one space per studio, along with one bedrooms. Two bedroom units instead of two point three goes to a straight two spaces per unit and along with three bedrooms if it meets some conditions that give us an indication that it wouldn't spill over into adjacent neighborhoods and cause negative impact. So that's the, the asterix there and when they qualify for that reduced standard. So this, like I said, went to our code alignment working group. We had a number of discussions. They actually, I think it was the one bedroom requirement, staff had initially proposed one and a half spaces for one bedroom units. And the code alignment working group said, no, we, we think that's still too high. That's not going to get us to where we want to go as, as far as creation of housing units and, and reshaping the built environment. So they directed us to lower that down to one space per unit and planning commission supported that recommendation. So again, it seems like kind of a, a small change, but on this next slide, I can give, I'll give you a sense of how this would impact a real world project. So when you look at, you know, hypothetical new apartment building, seventy five units total, you can see the split there between one and two bed units. Our current standards would require one hundred and fifty eight spaces. Under what's being proposed, we would require a hundred parking spaces. So a net difference of fifty eight spaces. If you do some quick math, each parking space is one hundred and seventy six square feet or eight feet wide by twenty two feet deep. You times that by fifty, fifty eight. And that's almost a quarter of an acre of space that is now on the table for a site amenity, a play area, some stormwater detention, preservation of existing, you know, trees or vegetation. That's one way that site could use that space. Or if that space was there to provide those fifty eight parking spaces, you could get the developer could get twenty nine to fifty eight more units on the site. And you, you can see how this makes a real, real tangible difference in how these projects are designed. So those are rough numbers. You know, it's a hypothetical project. There's other things to factor in there about landscaping requirements and some other things, but it just gives you a sense of how this will impact future development. So those are the multifamily recommendations. Keep rolling into our parking districts. Like I said, one of our objectives was to simplify the overall process of calculating how much parking is required. We have three districts right now, our central business district, our enhanced multimodal area, and then our general parking district. And each of those has a different formula depending on the land use. We saw a, an opportunity to combine the central business district with the enhanced multimodal area. Those two districts have similar qualities, characteristics, similar goals about providing a more walkable and sort of human scaled built environment. And so we're proposing to consolidate and go from three different parking districts to two. And then, as I mentioned before, we want to expand the enhanced multimodal area district. And this next slide has a map of the existing EMA area. And you can see it's pretty limited. It's just the, the area between Camino and Main downtown and then College Ave. And then on the, on my right, you have the proposed enhanced multimodal area parking district that has expanded to include North Main, largely based on some of the recommendations that came out of the North Main character district about how we want buildings and sites designed in that character district. We turned the corner and went south along Eighth Ave to include that, along with College. Included a bigger portion of Camino across to the river. And then some of the areas out Florida that are zoned for commercial or multifamily. North Main, Florida, Eighth Ave, all of those are served by transit as well. So that really gave us confidence that this could be adequately or logically considered an enhanced multimodal area. Next slide. Thank you. So, and this is a quick summary of the electric vehicle parking proposal. What we found from other communities is that they're starting with only a few specific land uses. And there's two ways to start preparing for electric vehicles. One is to, you know, require the charging station installed upfront with the development. The other is to have what's called EV ready parking spaces. And that's when the development is undertaken. They run conduit under the parking lot to areas where the charging stations could go in the future. And that relatively inexpensive process of getting the conduit in, getting enough space in your, in your panels for, to serve these charging stations in the future saves a, a significant amount of money as, as opposed to, you know, trenching through asphalt in the future or doing some other retrofit. So we have these two categories. The amount of EV ready spaces that are required and the amount of charging stations that were, are required. And what we're doing with this initial step is only applying this to new multifamily projects. Like I said, in the intro, we plan to come back probably in the next eight months, twelve months and have a more robust EV parking proposal. We just didn't have the, the time at this point to wrap that into this proposal, but we wanted to we're sort of designating the space where these new requirements will go. And then we're working with a consultant. Imogen Ainsworth is managing an EV ready assessment. And, and that's much broader than just parking requirements. That includes EV vehicles for city purposes and other things. But a part of that will be some very clear recommendations from the consultant on how we do some additional updates to our code. But this is what we're proposing to start with. And lastly, on parking, these are sort of the cleanups that I mentioned, and I'm happy to, to provide any more detail if, if we need to. But these are just issues that have cropped up over the past few years that we think need to be adjusted based on our experience. So again, we can come back to that if there are questions. The other component of these amendments are the trash enclosure and trash design standards. And this too has a big impact on how sites are laid out. These diagrams are the specs that our trash truck drivers and our operations department have wanted to implement. And because they weren't included in the land use and development code, they often got overlooked. They got missed by the, the design team and then they sort of designed their whole site. And then we said, oh, you need this area for trash enclosures and vehicle maneuvering. And it would totally change your whole site. So what we're doing is we're putting this in the code upfront. We're making sure that people are going to see this from the start when they start to lay out a site. So I don't think there's any major issues with these. But again, happy to come back and answer questions if you have any. So for the process, I think I hit on most of this early on, but I really do just want to highlight that these are particularly the parking updates are specifically called out in the housing plan. So action three point eight of the adopted housing plan is evaluate and propose new parking standards for certain residential land uses. It feels really good to be taking, you know, it was a really well-prepared plan and a, and a team effort again, and then, you know, putting it to work and, and making sure that those high level recommendations are being translated into a real tangible outcomes. So want to highlight that. And then also thank the code alignment working group. Those are volunteers that are already sitting on a board and commission that meets, you know, once a month or so. They all agreed to be a part of this effort, which is another monthly meeting. Often two hours talking about things like trash enclosure standards and parking stall dimensions. And, and they've been great. Some of them are architects, transportation advocates, things like that. So it's been a fun group to work with. And I just want to acknowledge their efforts. And, and we're, we're looking forward to replicating this process over and over again to do some additional rounds of code updates. We have noticed the code amendments and we have not received any public comments so far. And these are the LEDC review criteria when text amendments are being proposed. These are the things that the code wants us to look at to make sure they're the amendments are in line and legally defensible. So we've done that review. We feel like the amendments comply with these criteria. And so we're here tonight to recommend that you adopt these, these updated parking standards and trash enclosure standards. So thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Before we open the public hearing, is there any specific question council has at this time of, of Scott or staff? Barbara?
Sure, Scott. Thank you. First of all, thank you for this work. And I think I'm eagerly been looking forward to it. Your recommendations, I'm assuming, do not include ADA accessibility, both for standard vehicles ADA, but also for, I think, a bus for every X number of parking spaces. So that would be in addition to these spaces. And was that calculated into the one quarter of an acre saved in your example?
Yeah. So we do have ADA parking requirements in the code right now. We're not amending those as this, as part of this round of amendments. Those spaces count towards the overall required number of spaces. So when you say you need one space per unit, if you have ten units, you need ten spaces. One of those needs to be an ADA space that counts towards your required parking. And let's see, so did that? Yeah, I think that would be included in the hypothetical example because your parking formulas just gets you a, a gross number of spaces. And then, for instance, now you'll have to do some of those as EV spaces. Some of those may have to be ADA. Some of those can be compact parking spaces. So I just looked at the overall, the gross number of spaces.
Then my, my last question is, was there any appetite or consideration for the two bedroom having a one point five or a one point seven five something lower than the two parking spaces per unit?
Yeah. That didn't specifically come up. I'm just looking at my staff report here to planning commission. I don't remember a lot of discussion about the two bed units. Like I mentioned, the one beds were dropped down. So no, it didn't. It wasn't a topic.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Barbara. That was exactly my question was, is relative to the two bedroom. I, I love the reduction in parking for the people watching, listening in. It's, this represents a slight reduction as Scott was careful to describe, not too impactful for neighboring properties and so forth. And, and this is sort of a step down, if you will. I, I, I too was supportive of a one point five parking space for a two bedroom unit. It seemed like it fell into that sequence of one, one to two from a one bedroom to a three bedroom. And one point five therefore was in the middle of that, representing a two bedroom unit. But but that is a either an opportunity now or for, as Scott mentioned, for future consideration as we further refine these and allow this particular measure to be implemented and test the waters, if you will. The one question I had, Scott, was relative to the Inlu parking fee for CBD and, and now the EMA zones. Historically, we aren't trying to create any new development in downtown Denver, or downtown Durango does not have to provide the actual parking, but they have to support the city in provision, in provision of alternative parking by paying a fee per space. And so I was wondering if the, that Inlu fee is now being expanded to those areas within the EMA.
Yeah, good question. And I just pulled up that section of code, the fee in lieu was adopted or created by an ordinance. And it refers to the CB zone district. So I think the way I would read that is it's still only applicable in the central business zone district. Those other areas are zoned differently. So it's a mixed use arterial or other thing. We could, if council wanted us to, look at allowing that to expand and come back to you with amendments to that effect. But as of right now, the fee in lieu would only be still in the CB zone. And, you know, I, I think that still makes the most sense because really, at least for right now, CB zone is, is where we have public parking lots, where we have a lot of on, on-street public parking. Some of these other areas don't, don't have those sort of parking, that's parking support network that central business district has.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. That's absolutely true. And, but I, you know, I guess you know, for the public to know, that's how we accumulate money in support of a public parking garage. And historically, and there's a little bit of a fund in there to support the creation and construction of a new parking garage. And as, as I look forward to all that new development, redevelopment and densification, if you will, along North Main, it's almost thinking ahead that should we be looking at acquiring portions of property so that we can create public parking in the same sense that we have on East Second Avenue and things like that. As that becomes more walkable on North Main Avenue, that we might actually consider public parking to allow the most aggressive land use on, on private property. So again, another topic for the future. So with that, let's, let's move on. Is there any other questions? Oh, Kim, I'm sorry.
I, I do too. Okay, that's okay, Dean. So I just wanted to say how much I think this is. I do too. Okay, that's okay, Dean. So I just wanted to say how much I think this is a is a great thing that we're working on. And thank you so much to Scott and everyone else and all the team members who participated. The parking has been a significant issue in our affordability of our homes. And so I think this is a great direction that we're taking. I also like the enhanced multimodal area being expanded and combined. And I'm particularly excited about the EV-ready spaces and the chargers. I think we're ahead of the game here and and that'll help encourage people. One of the biggest reasons why people there's three top ones why people don't buy electric vehicles and and number two is that there's not a place to charge them. So I think this addresses that and will really help not just our initiatives, but the state's initiatives too. And I had one question, which was, you talked about adjusting the bike parking reduction incentive. What is what?
Yep, I can grab red lines. What that refers to is, I think, right now, there's, I want to say either five or six bike parking spaces required to replace one vehicle space up to a certain amount. And we're decreasing the number of bike parking spaces required to count towards a vehicle space. The we found in its its vehicle spaces, or I mean, it's bike parking spaces or it's bike lockers. And we found that there was sort of an oversupply, sort of an unreasonable amount of bike parking being provided for the to allow for the vehicle space reduction. So we're trying to make that more proportionate, I guess. And so we found that there's too many bike parking spaces. And we're right sizing that. So that's our general approach. And I can grab the more specific numbers.
I I just, I would like just to make, just keep an eye on that for the future. As our multimodal capabilities are enhanced and there's more capability for riding bicycles places, just to make sure that we're not going the opposite direction. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Melissa, thanks. Yeah, thanks for waiting. Sorry.
No, no problem at all. I I actually thought we might be hearing from the public first before we made comments, but it seems like we're gonna make comments first, so I will go ahead and do that.
We sure, sure. We're gonna do both. Usually I just have quick questions for for staff. And then we have a public hearing and then we come back for further debate. And and so.
I'm happy to wait. It just sounds like several counselors are kind of making their comments. So mine is, I have a couple of questions, but really they're in relation to the goals, our goals, and what we're trying to achieve here. And whether we are taking enough steps to move the dial in that regard. So what I think that I I'd like to do is listen to public comment and then speak after that.
Excellent. Excellent. Thanks so much. And we will have an opportunity that councillor Nosworthy?
Thank you. And this is just for Scott to think about after his hearing public comment, which I also am looking forward to. I guess I was wondering, under, are there any situations or conditions in which you can envision working with a developer, particularly on that two-bedroom requirement to reduce that amount and providing something. I was gonna say bike, extra bike parking, but you said that's not necessary. But under what conditions would you work with a developer to reduce that number to make it to make it pencil out a little better? So I wanted you to think about that as you listen to public comment and maybe answer later.
Excellent. Excellent. Yeah, let's hold that question. And if we don't get back to it, please remind us, councillor Nosworthy. And with that, I'd like to open the public hearing. And again, we we'd like to limit the public comments to three minutes. And our moderator will feed you into our into our meeting here. And please use the raise hand function on Zoom. Or if you're calling in using your telephone, press star nine to raise your hand. And Mitchell, our capable moderator, will let you into the discussion and provide three minutes of comments. So with that, I'd open the public hearing with the visual, with the virtual gavel here. And Mitchell, do we have any participants this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I see a couple here. The first one, Seth, please give us your first and last name for the record and whether or not you are a city resident and you have three minutes.
This is Seth Furtney. I am indeed a city resident. And my comment is fundamentally, when I see studies taking place, most of them related to, you know, roadways and improvements therein, I see a general inclination to assume that it's a car-centric world we live in and that we'll continue to live in. And I just question whether that assumption holds for the longer-term future. I mean, do we use cars? Will we use cars? Yes. But the dependence that we've come to assume, I think, may be excessive. And I look at like the 30th Street crossing, you know, adjustments that are being contemplated. And I look at the alternatives and see mostly, well, what do we do about the cars that want to do this? And what do we do about the cars that want to do that? Instead of asking the question is, how do the pedestrians and or let's say the bicyclists navigate this arena safely? And I think that same tone is something I'm imagining here, which is, okay, we've got to have this many cars because this is what our history suggests instead of planning for the 21st century. And I just encourage you to keep an open mind to think that things are indeed changing. I think the use of cars and the reduction in cars is is coming. I think of the story of, I think it was Walmart doing their work over in Bentonville. And they had to create literally a transportation network for the employees they attracted to the area because these were a lot of, keep it simple, urban area folks who didn't own a car, didn't want to own a car, didn't know how to drive and didn't want to learn how to drive. And that may not be our future, but it's just a signal that there's changes are coming. And I just wanted to share that thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Furtney. I might remind, as we is we we cannot have any visual campaigning on any city council meeting. So if candidates there, now now candidates for city council, if we could refrain from showing any campaign literature on screen now or anytime in the future. With that, next next participant, please.
Oh, yes, Mayor. The next person here is Harrison. Harrison, it's your turn to speak. Please unmute yourself. Give us your first and last name for the record and whether or not you're a city resident and you have three minutes.
Oh, okay. Now I'm kind of worried that, oh, no, I see. It says Harrison Lent is talking. Okay. I just want to say that I support the adoption of this. I think that the I I I urge you guys to look more further into the 1.5 for two bedrooms. But also while we're thinking about this, I think it's important to speak on and consider how important public transportation is with the reduction in parking spaces. You'll see the struggle in a lot of larger cities when they when they try to reduce the parking for multi-multi-family homes. It's it it seems that the biggest struggle is that they don't have a good public transportation set up in place. And it seems like that has been put on the back burner a little bit. And I I think that that's just something that really needs to remain at the forefront when discussing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wen. Appreciate your comments. Mitchell, any further comments?
The next one, Charles. I have invited you to speak. Please unmute yourself. Give us your first and last name for the record and whether or not you are a city resident and you have three minutes.
Okay, hi there. My name is Charles Shaw, and I am a city resident. I live at 1309 East Third Avenue. And I just would like to comment on, well, first of all, I want to agree with a lot of the comments that I heard earlier. But also that I'm really happy that the city has finally started addressing these parking standards. And I think it's a great start. And let's see. I guess I would like to see them go even further. I looked at the chart of cities and their parking requirements. And I think where we're going is great, but why can't we be the most progressive city in terms of parking standards? I talked to, I mean, I heard Seth mention that we are going to and probably we're moving away from cars to a certain extent and making cities more pedestrian and bike and public transport friendly. And so why don't we get it all done right now and not have to readdress this so soon in the future? And I I guess for me, if we went too far for a little while, that's not as bad as not going far enough with reducing these parking requirements. It seems like more of a downside to have too much parking and encourage people to, you know, own extra cars. And we should do everything we can to disincentivize that. But again, it's coupled with really stepping it up with the public transportation and the connectivity with bike paths and pedestrian-friendly streets where people can get around. I also want to point out that in the downtown, there really is plenty of street parking in the evenings. The only crunch that I've ever noticed is during the day. So I'd say we err on on less. Let's do zero parking for a studio and one parking spot for a three-bedroom. We don't know that there's going to be three people with cars. You know, a two-bedroom apartment, someone may have, you know, one of the rooms be their office and it could be one person living there. I just say we err on less parking. And so I think I encourage you to be bold and let's stand out in that list and be the city that has the least amount of parking requirements. Let's not just go to the middle of the pack right now. Let's be leaders in this and encourage other cities to follow our lead. And I think Durango deserves that. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Charles Shaw. Appreciate it. And with that, the next comment, please.
Next person on the list is Lisa. Lisa, it's your turn to speak. Please unmute yourself. Give us your first and last name for the record and whether or not you are a city resident and you have three minutes.
Hey, this is Lisa. Can you still hear me?
You bet, Lisa.
Great. Lisa McCurry, and I am a city resident. First, I'll start by saying I'm very grateful to all the heads and hearts on this work to realize the housing plan. I'm hugely in favor of simplifying and streamlining land use and development code to get more working-class folks in homes and entice developers to take on these projects. Appreciate the environmental stewardship of the enhanced multimodal areas and considerations for EV charging stations. I'm excited to see how the city continues to be creative in addressing the need for more affordable and attainable housing in the area. Huge potential. I do wonder how we can measure access to these to these homes, to buyer ship. I worry the, you know, person fastest to the table with cash in hand often excludes our lower-income residents that are piecing together mortgage assistance and multiple loans, sometimes two or three, and having to get really creative to get into these these homes. So that is something I think about. Thank.
Thank you, Ms. McCurry. Mitchell? Next participant, please.
Mayor, no one else has raised their hand yet. If you are here to speak for item 9.1.1 on the agenda, now is your opportunity. Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody else.
Thank you so much, Mitchell. With that, I close the public hearing and return to any specific questions counsel may have of of staff, particularly Scott in this regard, relative to the quantity or any of the topics we talked about a little bit before. Chris, Patine?
Yeah, I think the one item on the list, Scott, that it's come up a few times is the two-bedroom parking. And I just wondered if you could illuminate for us maybe a defense of that particular line because I'm I'm really, of everything you've done, I really appreciate all the work that all of the folks put into it all the time and energy. But the one line that I thought on there that really we could we could strengthen was that one and a half, which Dean mentioned, some of the folks that spoke mentioned on the two-bedroom. I just wanted to hear your thoughts on it. But I I might propose that we do strengthen that a little bit and reduce it. Because as I look at it, I think, you know, being that a real estate business, I think, you know, a two-bedroom almost always is, you know, it's a couple and maybe they have a kid or that's a guest room. And so having the requirement be two all the time seems a little bit high.
Yeah, I'll try and respond to that. And councillor Nosworthy's question too. I mean, you you all can see on the the table in your packets or the variety of how other communities have dealt with that. And that's just a helpful, I think, sort of milestone. I would point out, we have a section in the code that's that's called parking credits and reductions. And we're not amending any of that. There are opportunities there based on, you know, things like if they provide a car share program, if it's age-restricted housing, or if there's what's called a transportation demand management program, which is, or things like shuttles or encouraging carpooling in a in sort of a business setting. There is an opportunity right now in the code where you can go for for two-bedroom unit to have one and a one and a half spaces per dwelling unit if you place a restriction on the occupancy in that unit. And then the the apartment manager would would manage that. And I can I can read the details of that to you if you're interested. But I I would point out, and then lastly, there's there's an opportunity for a development to do a special study. And that's what Rocket Apartments did, the VOA Senior Housing Project did that. The Lumion, the new Lumion Apartments did a special study. They did some observations of other projects and were able to, it's almost like an administrative variance based on that study. And then lastly, of course, they can always request a variance. So just as far as councillor Nosworthy's questions about what are the avenues if we wanted to go that route? Those are things that are in place right now. You know, it's obviously council's discretion if you if you choose to reduce that further. So I I don't have any real solid defense. I would say, you know, kind of to Mr. Shaw's points about are we not going far enough? And, you know, we wrestle with that as a staff and thinking about what's the right step to take and what's maybe too much where there could be blowback the other way. And, you know, we try and try and sort of predict the outcomes. And and this is where we've landed in this case. And this is where the, you know, the Code Alignment Group and the Planning Commission felt comfortable. So I can just provide that info. And then if there's other questions, I'm happy to respond.
Yeah, just thank you. And just as a follow-up to that, I just think it was the narrative in those studies that you had in your report that was compelling to me in looking at that particular item. And as well as what Mr. Shaw mentioned, when you looked at the line items in other cities, that one stuck out quite a bit where you saw kind of the competitive set. Many of them were selecting that 1.5. And and I'm sort of encouraged to listen to what Mr. Shaw said on some level there in that particular line. You know, I wonder if council might support just just that one amendment, in my view.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Councillor Yusuf?
Thank you, councillor Patine. I I think that's a good points that you made. I too, since I didn't get to make my comments before, I do want to thank staff very much. Thanks staff for working on this issue and as well, all the members of the Code Alignment Group. Because I think this is really, really important work. And I'm very glad to see us taking steps to address one of our city council goals of of attainable and affordable housing and aligning the LEDC code for that purpose. So I really want to reiterate other councillors' thanks first. And starting with the opportunity of right sizing parking, I think it's a really, really good start. I think that it's actually action we can take. And that is our job as policymakers is to take action. Um and that is our job as policymakers is to take action and um move the dial on it. So that was what I was kind of initially bringing up um before uh public participation, which was, you know, are we moving it enough? And and I um, I guess I was asking, you know, kind of what is our goal? Is our is our goal really to make a movement on affordable and attainable housing? And if so, yes, I think Counselor Bettine, Counselor Noseworthy, you guys bring up the two bedroom. I agree with that um on the two bedroom, but I just even ask, is that is there more? Because we have an opportunity here as we do this. And one of the things that came up with me in my discussions today um with various industry people was why not experiment with taking a chance on being bold and thinking big? Um and as Counselor Bettine was saying, being progressive um and seeing what happens. And we can always go back. And the issue around it, which was intriguing to me is that I was speaking with a developer and they were suggesting that they are motivated by the opportunity to present forward innovative and creative ideas to address issues like this, decades old problems of parking. They're really motivated to think of creative ways, but they need the flexibility to be able to do it. So if we provided some more flexibility, as much as we think we're comfortable doing, then it gives developers the opportunity to kind of come up with different angles based on where that individual property might be, which is going to have different impacts located in different areas throughout town. And any of the work that they present to us still has to be approved. It still has to go through the Planning Commission. Um and so it's still vetted. So we would still have that opportunity to um to to do that vetting of any individual improvement. But um I do think that um it's just something I wanted to kind of pose. I um I was in agreement with Charles Shaw and I appreciated some of the points that he ma- made. And um I just think that this is an important opportunity to actually move the dial and I wanted to throw that out there for further consideration.
Counselor Noseworthy.
Thank you. Um again, Scott and team, a huge thank you for thinking about this and for giving the comparison of other towns, several of which I've lived in. So I'd like to encourage you to be even more assertive. We know we talked about a minimum of going down to one point five for a two bedroom, but I'd encourage you to even look at more at that. And I would remind everyone that workforce housing requires a compromise. And I often say that, you know, if you want attainable, affordable housing, it typically might mean you share a wall or a a a outdoor space and you don't have space for two cars and a boat. And that's the reality of it. And so I think we have to look at the compromise that as we're focusing on workforce housing, how can we partner and incentivize developers to take that risk? And I think we just reducing the parking requirement would be a huge incentive. And to Melissa's point, I would like to look at other options that could allow the flexibility for developers with an even lower rate, whether it's a contribution to the transit effort, something like that. I don't know what the answer might be, but I'd like to allow some uh encourage you to look at a lower reduction amount for at least the two bedroom and possibly the three. And then flexibility to both Counselor Bettine and Counselor Yusuf's points. Thanks.
Counselor Baxter, thank you.
Thank you, Dean. So I I find this really interesting. There's at least one um on the chart that you gave, at least one group that does one to two spaces for that same category. And I'm guessing that they base that upon the impacts, the neighborhood around it. Because, for example, if you had this on East Third Avenue, you'd have some real challenges with the lack of parking. But if you have it somewhere else in town, it might not have a significant impact at all. And that would allow for some flexibility. The other thing I noticed in the report was that it seems like you were saying that any, the reason why these were rounded to a whole number was a one point five generally would get rounded down where a one point six would get rounded up. And so putting it at one point five creates a um uh like an inconsistency or a challenge in that. So I'm wondering about that uh one to two concept to allow for that flexibility.
I might, we've all had it one chance. I I want to just add in a little bit as well. In uh, you know, it's, we we talk about workforce housing. I I can't remember a uh tax credit approved project, including in in the past couple decades, in fact, reaching back that far, that has not had a parking uh variance. Uh I look at uh and and so the the idea that we're reducing this to achieve workforce housing appropriateness is is to encourage workforce housing uh is is. We've been doing that for the past 20 years, quite honestly. I I look at the all Lumion, as as Scott mentioned, both phases of Lumion, the two adjacent senior housing projects were reduced possibly down, I can't remember, to one space per unit for those special populations being senior and low income. Housing has always uh had that administrative variance. So wha- what we're doing here is not revolutionary by any means. But uh and I I'd like to respect the the work that the Code Alignment Team put into this. But I do, I do think that uh the idea of a one point five makes has some merit. And I hate to just override uh the work that's been put into this. But I do think that was justified in a a number of those towns, which I too lived in, was born in one of them, Bozeman, Montana. Appreciate that one a lot. And uh but uh yeah, I I don't think this is too radical and and so it's not a, as we push down incrementally or reduce incrementally, I I think we can do it with uh compare relative confidence that it's not going to impact have have too big of impact on uh on that. The idea of one point five to in brought up by by Counselor Baxter. I mean, whenever you calcu- it's only that last parking space that gets rounded up or rounded down. You know, if you got forty five point five parking spaces required by calculation, then you might then those in the design business know you have to provide forty six spaces. So I don't see any fraction being a problematic at at all. But I do like the idea that was, you know, that we uh there 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 might be a range there for specific populations and uh tie it to uh available transit, other transit opportunities as well. So uh if we do another round, I see uh.
I didn't want to make a round. I'm sorry, Mayor. I just wanted a a quick comment because I think it's important. Counselor Baxter brought up a really good point, which I think is worth noting. Um and that is that um, you know, and Commissioner Ulrium brought this up in her in the Planning Commission, which is a question about Third Avenue. Um and I think that that's a really important point to make in this discussion. And Scott Shine responded to Commissioner Ulri's question um in the Planning Commission and said that these would not necessarily impact Third Avenue because it's um really directed at new multifamily developments. And Scott, you may want to touch on that, but I know parking is an issue for Third Avenue. So I just wanted to throw that out there for potential clarification.
Yeah, thank you, Melissa. I wasn't, I was using that as an example, not as an example where this might take effect. But Dean, I did want to say to your point about Lumion and and such, that's a subsidized housing program, which is also one of the reasons why the parking can be reduced. But these um uh regulations would apply also to an eighty to one hundred and twenty percent AMI area, which is more of the workforce housing. And so um I think that lowering them in an area uh for that eighty to one twenty AMI is great. I absolutely support that and we haven't been doing that in the past. So that's one thing I think an initiative for us to start doing that is a great thing.
Well, uh I I that's possibly true. I'm not, maybe we can ask Scott what the concession on Rocket, the Rocket Development was. I believe they got a parking substantial reduction. And that was not uh, that's a rental property, but it served that uh higher income level, not, it was not tax credit subsidized.
And that was because they did the parking surveys and the studies that also informed this change that we're that Scott's bringing forward now. So it was based upon reality, not not just our parking code, fortunately.
But that's that's that was my point, that that it's been custom that, you know, any project of that nature has been relatively uh able to justify or reduce parking standard for a pretty long time now within the city of Durango.
But it was very interesting to note that in those two examples, that they were still, they still had vacant spaces. And so, I mean, that I think that's very telltale and and in for those in the community listening that weren't able to see the agenda doc, it was Lumion and Rocket. And I think, what was the percentage of occupancy of those spaces, Scott, that it said? For those studies?
I'm sorry, I don't have it right in front of me, but um they were down, down, yeah, seventy to sixty to seventy percent of of what they provided, even with the adjusted amount of spaces. So I think uh you're noting a a clear trend. And I just wanted to touch on one thing that I I don't think the working group by adjusting their recommendation would would feel um disrespected or anything. I think that's obviously, you know, they go through their process, they honed in on a few things and adjusted some things as they went through. And again, as as counsel gets feedback and uh thinks about really the overarching goals we want to accomplish, that's well within um your right to to adjust that. You see that there's communities that are doing that. So again, we we uh try to bring forward a solid proposal and um have rationale for it. But um we hope you take it and noodle it and make sure that it it meets with what your overall goals are. So don't don't feel like that would be offensive to to anybody, least of all staff as as you're engaging with this issue.
Thank you, Scott. Uh I see Counselor Noseworthy had one.
Yeah, I have a question about the parking as it relates to the Urban Renewal Authority and the uh midtown area. Because you were talking about not changing the code within the Central Business District. And as we think about promoting multi-use development, redevelopment in this area, are we limiting our potential there um by not also addressing some reduction in parking in that, particularly that midtown area, recognizing that there are places, as um Kim and Melissa have said, that Third Avenue and others that have serious pro- uh issues with parking? But I I'm just wondering your thoughts if you're hampering any potential public-private partnerships because of not reducing this parking.
And it's it's a um confusing because we're talking about the Central Business Zone District and then we're talking about the Central Business Parking District, which are two different areas. So this, the midtown area is actually in the Central Business Zone District. So it would be eligible to pay that in lieu fee that the mayor was talking about. So that's on the table for them. That could, you know, reduce their onsite parking even further if they made those contributions to the City Parking Fund. So I I think it's in good shape based on how it's zoned. We're also including that area in the Enhanced Multimodal Area, which are reduced parking requirements for um commercial uses and other things. So I think we're in good shape there, but that's that's a good point.
Thank you for that clarification.
On East Third Avenue, though, if we do have redevelopment in Midtown and we have a significant amount of housing, that does actually impact East Third Avenue in one way or another, even though it's not on East Third Avenue. But so um Scott, I, when I was looking through the documents, I noticed there were a couple of different amendments or proposals, motions, and I'm not certain which one it is that you need. It looked like there might have been one for each area or was I just?
No, we can do these as a as a batch. And I don't know, Mitchell, if you have the slides on that last slide, there was a recommended motion. You can obviously adjust that as you need to.
I would, unless there's a additional discussion, I would entertain a motion and like and entertain a motion that might include any modifications of the proposed ordinance.
Um so while I would make a motion to approve the proposed text amendments with with the finding that the proposal is consistent with city goals and policies and complies with the LUDC review criteria with the um with the change that in the two bedroom parking um it be reduced to one point five. I actually would prefer one to two, but I don't, everybody seems to like one point five, so I'll put that one out there.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Before we have a roll call, do we have discussion?
Yes.
Uh we can have, we've had, thank you, and we certainly can. And if there's further discussion, uh we uh we can uh.
I was only just um wanted to do further discussion in regards to the motion itself. Um and so um I just was um wanting to see a little bit more action if we could. I really think we have an opportunity to take a bold step here. Um and I'm, you know, you mentioned Counselor Baxter, the possibility of one. And I guess I'm I'm moving for a two bedroom. Um I'm moving more into the vicinity of just trying to be as bold and aggressive as we can within the confines of also trying to protect our quality of life. But recognizing that in many cases, we we have parking. Um and so and and also recognizing that we have the ability to, on a case by case basis, review the developments, where they are, where they're located and what options are near those. So I guess I just wanted to add that for discussion before we take a roll call.
And and I would like um, I'd like a better understanding of what the implications of a one to two for the requirement. If that could actually result in what Melissa's trying to achieve, which is more flexibility in there. So um while I'm pleased with a motion to go to one point five for the two bedroom, I would welcome uh staff reviewing this and coming back with what the implications may be if we went even more assertive in the reduction. Uh you know, I think you've done a lot of work. I don't think you're waiting with bated breath this evening for a decision. So if it gave you more time to have confidence to come back a little more boldly, I would welcome a a review of this at the next city council meeting.
Perhaps we can ask, you know, the a a range requires some further uh regulation by uh by staff. And so uh I don't know if Scott can speak to that issue in this discussion before we bring a vote uh as to how uh, you know, if there's a range, there has to be guidelines as to how that range is imposed on a developer. And uh as a practitioner, I'd be interested in knowing that. So I don't, Scott put you on the on the spot in terms of any thoughts or the previous discussions on how a range might be uh legislated on the part of the.
Yeah, so I think you're you're right, Mayor, that it there would be some criteria and when you um are eligible for a one versus when two spaces are required. And um we can certainly go back and look at that particular community and what those are, what those criteria are that they've used. We would, you know, need some time to do that. But we would need to, you know, show, you know, when each end of that range comes into play and have some objective review criteria that give us a a basis to make that decision. And you know, things like adjacent on-street parking are probably in there. Adjacent or vicinity of public parking lots, vicinity of transit. Those are the types of things that would be involved in in that review criteria. So I guess the over overall, you know, I've heard flexibility mentioned a lot. And I I would just say there's a, there's a big chunk of the parking code that is designed to provide that flexibility that's not, we're not amending it tonight. And so it's not right in front of you, but I just want to assure you that and and like you mentioned, all these recent projects where we looked at things like tandem parking, we looked at variances, we looked at um adjacent on-street parking, a lot of that is in the code. And we we do that through the review process. Planning Commission does that when we look at um development proposals. So um I I want to assure you that that's built into the code, even though you may not see it here tonight. There are a lot of opportunities for reductions for tailoring the parking requirement. Um and and, you know, maybe if if you're comfortable moving forward with this tonight, we can come back and share some of those with you to make, you know, hope you understand those better or however you want to do that. But that is definitely in the code to facilitate credits reductions based on the different types of scenarios that are that are um considered.
I I, you know, I almost prefer that kind of a narrative as opposed as opposed to establishing specific criteria that would, you know, give, you know, dictate, you know, if you're on the lower end range, a a lower end of the range versus the higher end of the range. You know, what in in, you know, I, you know, every, every project is so different. And so that might be, you know, so that allows every developer that might have a specific situation to justify a reduction based on certain criteria. And then if without, but but at least we've got a standard that at least identifies a minimum so that we don't impact the adjacent neighborhoods and that kind of thing in those cases where it truly would affect an adjacent neighborhood. So and I and I can vouch for Scott's representation that there are other avenues, many of them within the code that are are and can and have been used by virtually almost every development that we've seen over the years recently. If there's no further discussion, we do have a motion. As was stated, it was for approval of the entire package, including the trash enclosures, which I have to say I'm happy to see legislated and mandated at this point. Not a not a suggested measure, but a mandated measure. And a modification of the proposal for 1.5 spaces per two-bedroom unit was the revision that was suggested in that motion. So with that, may I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Batine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Nosworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Broke?
Yes, thank you so much. And with that, we'll move on to, motion passes, I should say, and as amended. And we'll move on to 9.1.2, which is a public hearing to consider an ordinance authorizing the transfer of city-owned land to the Colorado Department of Transportation for the purposes of a roadway intersection and pedestrian improvements at 1235 Camino del Rio. That's to the intersection at River City Hall. Uh, may we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor Broke and Counselors Kevin Hall, Assistant City Manager. Uh, first, I guess I'd like to say happy birthday to our city manager, who I just noticed has a birthday today, so happy birthday, Jose. This item before you is laid out in such a manner that it's fairly procedural. However, and I'll talk through that in a moment, but I want to talk a little bit about the project itself that C-Dot is proposing to do some improvements on the highway. And you might recall on January the 26th, C-Dot was with the Council on Study Session and talked about the Camino Corridor and the changes that are pending for improvements with medians and ADA ramps and some other additional pedestrian improvements. What they're proposing here at the River City Hall driveway is a realignment to that driveway, getting rid of what is essentially a, call it a park chop, which is it splits the driveway into two portions. And it was really originally intended to allow for the fire trucks to ingress and egress more effectively. They are now proposing kind of tightening that driveway up as part of the larger improvements in the highway corridor, adding curb ramps and sidewalks adjacent to that reestablished driveway. They need about 941 square feet of city-owned property in order to do that. Our process is such that in order for us to transfer land to others, we need to have a public hearing, we need to have an ordinance adopted to do that. C-Dot did appraise the property, and as you saw in the staff report, there's a value associated with the 931 square feet of, as well as a temporary construction easement of just over $37,000. C-Dot has to go through the Federal Uniform Act in order for them to acquire properties. So it's a fairly formal and rigid process, very methodical steps have to be taken. And they did appraise the entirety of the River City Hall property. You may know that there's three city-owned parcels associated with the River City Hall property. They only appraised the parcel in which the River City Hall building actually resides on, and that is about 2.5 acres, a little over 2.5. And that appraisal came in at $4 million. So that's where they came up with their 37. They just did the square footage calculations for the small portion that they would like to acquire from the city and do these improvements on that would then benefit the River City Hall property. Um, I I think from a standpoint of the the larger project, though, what you heard on the 26th was a number of improvements being proposed in that corridor. Those improvements, by and large, they're in alignment with not only the multimodal plan we have, but also the Camino Character District Plan. What we do know, though, and I I did attach the agenda docs from the 26th just as a reminder of what we saw back last month, which is the Multimodal Advisory Board had some recommendations for some changes in the corridor. We also know that there is to be design work done on a a separated grade crossing of the highway that's going to be initiated later this year. The question of where that separate crossing may impact the highway corridors, yet unknown. In the meantime, C-Dot would like to proceed ahead with the improvements that they presented on the 26th. In order to, in order for them to do that, they need to have the city transfer the property. What we would need to do here is have a public hearing. If there's support for doing so, you would direct the the city attorney to prepare an ordinance that would, in typical fashion, would have two readings and then a publication period. It would be the end of March before the ordinance could become effective. As part of that process, we would also need a memorandum of agreement with C-Dot, which really outlines the transfer of the property. As you saw on the staff report, C-Dot is suggesting, rather than paying the city these dollars, they would exchange a parcel that's out in Grandview that we have been working with them on relative to the Grandview, the new Grandview interchange at the Roundabout. Uh, as you know, there's some development that is initiating out on the Roundabout in the coming months. Part of that is a road alignment that would take from the Roundabout back to the west to the adjacent parcels, including the gravel operation that's over there, as well as the web property. There's no immediate plans for the road to be extended as a public road. However, the driveway would come through C-Dot property into the Roundabout. That is where there's property where they would like to transfer and and essentially do an even exchange with the city for the 931 square feet. They would be transferring approximately 1.7 acres to us. There's a much higher value on that property in in terms of their appraisal process. So what you have before you is really the steps taken that we can take in order to get to a point where we're ready to execute a memorandum of agreement because there's still some undecided issues relative to design within the Camino Corridor. We have the next six weeks or so to try to hammer out some of those final issues with with C-Dot. Again, we won't have clarity on this underpass issue and whether an underpass in this location obviously would impact these improvements that C-Dot wants to do. But as you know, C-Dot plans this year to do the highway improvements as well as improve the the crosswalk there. There's still issues relative to how the crosswalk will function, where it will function. And those are the things we'd like to see if we can work out before we actually execute the memorandum of of agreement. But in the meantime, if there's support for doing so, we can set the stage for this minor land transfer so that when spring comes, they, we essentially are ready to go and C-Dot's ready to go with the work that they need to do. So with that, we need to hold the the public hearing. And then after the public hearing, if there's interest in doing so, direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for reading and also direct the city manager to negotiate all the final terms of the MOA for execution later this spring. With that, I'll entertain any questions?
And thank you, Kevin. And Counselors, I might suggest, based on our previous hearing, that maybe we limit our questions at this point and jump right into the public hearing and see if there's any questions that might come up from that and then continue our questions, discussion with counsel after the public hearing. Is there anybody that is opposed to that at this point? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. And Mitchell, I will ask anybody that's listening in, if you are, would like to speak to this issue in a public hearing, please raise your hand in Zoom or use star nine if you're dialing in on a phone. And with that, Mitchell, do we have any participants?
Uh, Mayor, I do not see anyone who has raised their hand yet. We do have quite a few attendees in our list. So if you are here to speak to item 9.1.2, now is your time. Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody.
Going once, going twice, okay. With that, thank you, Mitchell. I will close the public hearing and ask for any further questions of Kevin Hall from from our city council. Counselor Baxter?
So Kevin, I asked this the last time, and I wasn't clear in your response this time about the impacts on Camino, on the Camino Crossing at that location. I understand that we don't have a design yet, but if C-Dot goes and redoes something there and then it turns out that that's exactly the spot where the undercrossing or overcrossing, whatever choice ends up being made, would land or come out, what happens?
Well, you're you're correct in maybe your observation that those things would come out. I will tell you from when we did the Main Avenue underpass at the river, uh, we took out half of the highway at a time and you had to rebuild the entirety, you know, the the cross-section of the highway, as well as everything underneath it came out. So and you'd probably have to do the same thing here because it's not likely that we would bore under or drop something over the top. If you were doing an overpass, it might be a different circumstance, but we don't know that today. If it's an underpass, the highway improvements will will be disturbed and have to be replaced if, in fact, that's where they land.
Right, so that so that would mean anything in that area above the board hole would have to be dealt with. Okay, thank you.
Uh, any further discussion? Well, so what I understand from that, Kevin, is that, you know, there you anticipate a significant amount of coordination in the next three to four months on this issue. And this is simply setting the motion in place for pending the outcome of a of our of our crossing design. Allow, this would allow C-Dot to move ahead with with their improvements at their risk and and but allow us to finalize design that would be ultimately coordinated with their improvements, as I would anticipate. They aren't going to spend money if if, in fact, that's our targeted exact location, I would assume. But at least the property is there for them to do so if pending our our final determination.
Well, that is, in fact, what we're trying to set up the process to come to a conclusion on the land transfer. This process has been underway for not quite a year, but it's a fairly lengthy process with the appraisals and the Uniform Act. And C-Dot would like to bring to conclusion. I just know that council had some questions about final design issues. I know staff had some as well. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, staff recognizes that there there's opportunities to still have some conversations about alternatives in the corridor that we'd like to have. And we have a handful of weeks here where I think we can have those conversations. And if we need to come back for more conversation with council, we can certainly do that as we move forward. Certainly, staff has been working with the C-Dot folks closely over the weeks to try to come up with some solutions that hopefully meet the intent of the Multimodal Advisory Board, as well as our some of our fine-grained detail of the character district.
Kevin, I'm also reminded that the other end of this transit transaction, which is the the increase in land out in the Three Springs area at that intersection is is also timely and sets this, approval of this tonight would set in motion ability to for the city to be the benefactor of that land acquisition out there. So, you know, I think in my mind, it seems fairly reasonable.
C-Dot is going through a similar process with their processes right now to get approval to transfer that 1.6 acres to the city.
Excellent.
So this would culminate it with the MOA later this spring.
And do we have a date for the estimated design for any potential underpass or, as Counselor Baxter said, overpass, which I I don't think is in part of the design? But do we have a date for that design being presented to us?
Well, it has not been, we haven't selected a consultant to do that work yet. It would be a 2021 project. So I think you could anticipate summer time where we'd have a better sense of what the scope of the project is and when it's moving forward.
And Kevin, when you say a 2021 project, that's
Design.
Is a 2021 project, not the implementation, not the construction?
And it's it's more than that because we'll most certainly, regardless of the location, knowing what we know about land ownership in that corridor, there'll be right-of-way issues that have to be addressed on our part. And certainly anytime you're working in the C-Dot right-of-way, it kicks in a lot of the same requirements for us. So all those details will be worked out with our Transportation Department in the coming weeks and months. And certainly there'll be updates along the way for council and the Multimodal Board and others.
Thank you, Kevin. Any further comments? Uh, I for one am delighted to hear that C-Dot is willing to make these improvements regardless and and to add to the safety of that particular stretch of road in the short term. And if it ends up that there's some disturbance of these improvements, so be it in the future. So but I I I think they recognize the safety hazard and are responding. And I think I for one appreciate that effort. With that, I'd call for a motion. I can help with that motion if that.
Well, I have one question about the motion. Do we still hold a public hearing or was this considered the public hearing?
We did have a public hearing. There was no participants, and we closed the public hearing. And this is a council discussion. Uh, I believe we are now ready for the motion.
Then I will make a motion to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance authorizing the transfer of the described city-owned land to the Colorado Department of Transportation for purposes of roadway intersection and pedestrian improvements. Additionally, directing the city manager to take all actions necessary to finalize and execute the MOA with C-Dot pursuant to the above outline.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, may we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Nosworthy?
Yes.
Counselor, Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Batine?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Broke?
Yes, thank you so much. And with that, we'll move on to our quasi-aggrandiose hearing. We have one this evening, and it's 9.2.1, a public hearing to consider the 150 East 33rd Street Preliminary Minor Subdivision and 3215 East Second Avenue Preliminary Minor Subdivision. Uh, may we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of council. Savannah Lidle, City Planner, Community Development. This is for two minor subdivisions that are being reviewed together. Um, as they are adjacent properties, there will be two separate motions, but we're reviewing them at the same time. And that is 150 East 33rd Street and 3215 East Second Avenue, Preliminary Minor Subdivisions. Get acquainted with where this is. This is North Main. We've had a lot of discussion about this tonight. East 32nd Street, this is City Market. Over here, just to get you oriented, Anamis City Park is here. There's a railway and Amis River is actually quite a bit lower. These are the two properties right here that we will be reviewing today. This is Ariel. These are the two properties right here, a single-family home on this lot and a duplex is on this lot existing. Car wash here, there's the park. Apartments right here, City Market's over here, just to get oriented. This is Zoned E and 2. Future land use is high density, and this allows 12 to 24 dwelling units per acre. And this allows 12 to 24 dwelling units per acre. Uh, with these two combined, that is point eight nine acres, which would allow 10.68 to 21.3 dwelling units um, on both of these properties together. The proposal, uh, if they put on the, well, if they put in, um, the duplexes, that would be 10 units, uh, which is proposed. And this is the missing middle residential transition area that's called out in the North Main Character District Plan. Uh, so where these yellow buildings, uh, oops, go back to that. So the yellow, which is this blue star is off a little bit here, um, right about here is the yellow is these high transition areas. And this is where we want to bring some of that missing middle housing back. Um, and these are house scale buildings with multiple units in them. So these are duplexes, um, and these types of buildings such as duplex would provide the, a diverse housing option in this neighborhood and support the locally serving retail along North Main as well as the public transportation options that are also, um, along North Main. So duplexes are a great mix of that housing. They still have the scale that's we see throughout EN two zone, but then they provide that greater density. This is a preliminary plat. Uh, these are two separate, um, these are two separate parcels currently. And there are existing lot lines and, um, historically, and they would be divided along those lot lines. So we see over on the southern lot where there is the existing duplex that would be divided into three, um, equal sized lots. The existing duplex would remain and then the proposal would be on these other lots, they could have duplexes as well. On the northern parcel, that would also be split into three lots. The southernmost lot would be the largest, the existing, um, single family home would be demolished. Uh, and then there would, so that would allow for duplex lot on the most southern edge. And then the two northern ones would be, uh, eligible for, for single family homes due to size. Uh, this is East 33rd Street here, and then this is East Second Avenue. So it would be a total of six parcels, um, on the property line. Allowing for the four duplexes and then two single family homes. Alley is back here. All of the properties would be accessed off of the alley except for the northeast corner, which would be accessed off of East 33rd Street. This is standard throughout the EN two zone districts. All public improvements would be required, um, once these properties come in for building permits. These do meet the requirements of subdivisions as outlined in the Land Use and Development Code. They are compatible with the existing zoning of EN two. And then in compliance as well as, uh, standards for new, for new non-residential mixed use lots in EN two. Uh, EN two requires that the minimum street fringe be 35 feet and minimum lot area be 4,000 square feet. All six of these lots are over that. They meet these requirements. Staff has reviewed this, um, against both, uh, the comprehensive plan as well as North Main Character District, which includes these lots and the Land Use and Development Code and has found these proposed subdivision to meet all of the criteria. And so staff is recommending approval of the two preliminary minor subdivisions. Um, subject to the following conditions. All plat language, plat notes and easement dedications determined appropriate by city staff on the final plat be included. All future development beyond the proposed subdivision will be subject to future reviews and approvals in accordance with the requirements of the Land Use and Development Code. All written, verbal and graphic representations of the applicant shall be deemed conditions of approval. And all comments provided by city staff shall be addressed prior to recordation of the plat. There will be two separate motions, um, and I have them both here. Uh, one for 3215 East Second Avenue and one for 150 East 33rd Street.
Thank you, Ms. Lidle. I'm on off mute here. Thank you, Ms. Lidle. And, uh, uh, again, I'll, uh, ask council if it might be more, uh, prudent to hold our comments till after public hearing. And, uh, after the applicant has an opportunity to speak if so, if they wish to do so. And, uh, unless there's anybody that has an immediate question for Savannah at this point. Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing and again, uh, invite, uh, members of the public that are visiting by Zoom, uh, to use the raise hand function and Mitchell will allow you into our, our virtual meeting. And if you're calling in by phone, just, uh, push star nine. And, uh, Mitchell will let you in at which point you unmute by using star six. Mitchell, any participants?
Uh, so far, nobody has raised their hand. Um, we do still have quite a few attendees. If you are here for item nine point two point one, uh, please raise your hand now. Not seen anybody.
Alrighty, no takers. Well, thank you, Mitchell. And with that, I'll close the public hearing and return to, uh, um, council discussion. Uh, but, uh, first allow an opportunity for the developer or applicant to, um, uh, speak to this issue. If, uh, if there is a, a member of the, from the applicant's team. If not, uh, we'll move right into council discussion. Savannah, are you aware that if there's any applicant gonna, oh, accounts, yeah.
Tracy, Tracy Reynolds. Hand raised.
Uh, I believe that is Tracy Reynolds. I have allowed you to speak. Please identify yourself.
Yes, Tracy Reynolds, 1140 Main Avenue. Uh, I think Savannah did a great job of covering everything, so I don't have anything to add, but I can answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. And, uh, if you can hang on, uh, stay with us and we'll have a council discussion. And, uh, council, any questions for staff or the applicant? Counselor Baxter?
Yeah. Hi, Savannah, I just, I had a question and then maybe Tracy can speak to it too. If I understood correctly, these, the entire grouping of properties could accommodate 12 to 24 units in the future plan. Is this the case?
According to the future land use, the future land use allows 12 to 24 dwelling units per acre. The acreage that we're dealing with is only point eight nine. So that would allow for the 10.68 to 21.3. So it could have up to 21.3 dwelling units.
And it's currently, the proposal is for 10 units?
Correct.
So, you know, in our, in our context here of more housing helps make things more affordable. Would there be any idea, uh, maybe this is a question for Tracy of, or is there any reason Savannah, why we wouldn't, um, encourage more units?
There isn't any reason why we wouldn't. One reason that staff was in support of this particular one is that this happens to be in the EN two zone district. So that missing middle housing really provided, uh, the context of something that looked more like a single family home while providing the greater density. But there's, there's no reason it, it was up to the applicant of what they want to provide as far as that.
So Tracy, do you have any comment on that question?
Yeah, we looked at, uh, looked at a whole, whole bunch of different scenarios for this property. Um, and ultimately we decided right now there's a huge market or single family homes or a single family with an ADU or duplex owner occupied homes. And because the zoning was already EN two, it seemed to make sense to not try to go through the, all the trouble of changing the zoning and, um, doing something higher density. It was simplest just to stay with that zoning and divide it up and sell lots.
Would the two single family dwellings have the capability of having an ADU?
They could.
Okay.
Each, each one of the lots could have a single family home, a single family home with an ADU or a duplex that's owner occupied.
Thank you.
Any other comments for, uh, staff or Mr. Reynolds? Well, with that, uh, I'd, uh, move forward with a entertaining motion. Uh, as was stated, we have two motions. First to approve the east 150, or excuse me, the 150 East 33rd Street property, minor subdivision, subject to the findings and conditions as stated in the January 25th, 2021 Planning Commission staff report. I'd entertain a motion on that measure.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Counselor Nowsworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Batine?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Brokey?
Yes. And, uh, moving on, then we have, uh, an approval. The second portion of that measure is to approve the 3215 East Second Avenue preliminary minor subdivision subject to the findings and conditions as stated in the January 25th, 2021 Planning Commission staff report.
So moved again. And Amy, it's Melissa Youssef.
Second.
You guys are eager tonight. Thank you so much. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Counselor Batine?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Nowsworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Brokey?
Yes. And thank you, staff and, uh, Mr. Reynolds. And, uh, with that, we'll move on to the, uh, next item, which is a, um, introduction of ordinances, item, agenda item 11.1. An ordinance approving the annexation and initial zoning for the 26th 918 South Highway 160 addition to the City of Durango and, and declaring an effective date. Uh, I believe, uh, Mr. Nelson, are you prepared to talk about this or, or staff?
This one actually, uh, Mr. Mayor was, uh, at the request of the owner has been continued or will be continued to the next regular meeting of the city council. They had some issues that weren't quite, uh, worked out, so they've asked to move that.
Well, excellent. They must have known it was Jose's birthday and, uh, wanted to shorten the agenda. So we'll move on to, uh,
Mayor, just want to make sure I'm, we're covering all bases. In the, in the doc, there were three motions for that previous one. I just want to make sure that.
I am so sorry. Yeah, I thought there was just two. Now let's move, uh. Thank you for that reminder. We need to, uh,
If we need to do that, then we should cover all bases before we move on. It is authorizing the mayor to execute the milars upon completion of all final plating requirements. Again, this was for nine point, uh, no. I'm sorry. I'm not sure.
I thought that was implicit in each of the motions, but I might, uh.
If it was, then fine. I, I, I just want to make sure.
I'm, I'm just going back to, to that for a motion, for a, uh, let's.
I'm looking at the staff report page and they do only have the two motions that Dean read. Okay.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you so much, although, uh, for both of you for, uh, reviewing that. And, uh, uh, yeah, I think, I think that was, uh, typical language that's implicit in, uh, in any motion. So, uh, so thank you so much. So we are back at, uh, little, uh, excuse me, uh, 11.2, that ordinance, uh, amending, uh, that C. So with that, we will move to 11.2, an ordinance of the City of Durango, uh, Colorado, amending Article Four of Chapter 23 of the Code of Ordinances regarding the imposition, collection and administration of the lodgers tax and declaring an effective date. Uh, so with that, I might pass it off to, uh, city attorney Dirk Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this will be ordinance number, uh, zero 2021 dash three when it come to that. Uh, this item follows the council adoption of a resolution at the February 2nd meeting to, um, uh, set the ballot question for the lodgers tax for the April election. And that language, uh, that was approved for the ballot provides the council will adopt an ordinance, uh, to detail the administration and collection of the tax. Uh, council did see a draft ordinance, uh, for the hearing that was held on this ordinance on February 2nd. Um, there have been no changes to that language. The, the substance of the language is the same, uh, from that previous draft. I can quickly go through the substance here, but primarily, again, this makes changes to the existing code to align with the proposed, uh, increase in the lodgers tax and to specify the uses uh, that can be made of those funds as collected. Uh, it also details the, uh, specific properties that the tax will apply to. Uh, and again, some details of collection. So, um, this is set for first reading tonight. It will be set for second reading next meeting and then again be, um, in final force prior to the election on the question of the increase in the lodgers tax for the, on the April 6th election. I'd be happy to entertain any questions if you have any.
Dirk, uh, this, uh, as an introduction of an ordinance, this requires no public hearings. And so the public knows there will be no public hearing, that that has already been occurred.
Uh, so this is. Hearing at the last meeting, that's right.
Yeah. And this is the introduction, uh, for first reading. Uh, uh, we might just review the salient points of the tax again in terms of the percentages, uh, the percentage increase and then the percentage of allocation of those. So that people, uh, are familiar with and, and are reassured that we haven't changed anything since our last public hearing.
Right. Uh, no, this language follows the, um, language of the resolution the council approved to set the ballot question. And that is to raise the tax from the current 2% to 5.25%. Um, as, as the lodgers tax to be applied to the city, uh, the purposes, and so the, the draft ordinance does provide that the funds would go into a separate fund uh, to be administered by action of the city council. Um, either by a separate resolution or through the budget process. And the funds to be derived from the imposition of the tax, uh, are detailed to be expended for, uh, purposes described as 55% for sustainable tourism, tourism marketing, including advertising and attracting conferences, conventions and meetings. 20% for transportation and transit services, equipment and facilities. 14% for arts and cultural events, programs and facilities. And 11% for any of the above purposes or other purposes related to the impacts of tourism as council may determine. Um, again, the, uh, there's some other details in terms of collection. The ordinance, uh, uh, follows the current provision in the ordinance. Uh, the code that to allow for, um, 2% of the amounts collected to reimburse the city for administration and critical expenses incurred in collection of the tax. Um, so that's, that's a quick summary.
Thank you, Dirk. Uh, any questions for, uh, for Dirk at this point from council? Seeing none, uh, Dirk, procedurally, we do take this to a vote at each reading.
Yes.
And so I would entertain a motion.
And again, it will be ordinance, so 2021 dash three.
Anyone brave enough to, uh, entertain a motion in that regard? Move to approve ordinance zero 2021 dash three. Thank you, Counsel Batine. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counsel Youssef. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I might just remind the public that this has been the topic of, uh, vigorous debate over a number of months. Uh, I had some inquiry as to, uh, you know, what the budgets, uh, were for the various agencies that were going to be funded by this. And, uh, uh, I can assure, uh, that, that particular individual, that, uh, there has been, uh, proposed budgets, particularly from Visit Durango as well as the Durango Creative District. Uh, substantial amount of discussion about how it would be used for, by the city for transportation, uh, technique, uh, meth, methods and, uh, in support of the transit system. Uh, so, uh, you know, uh, it, it is meant to be fairly flexible, but, uh, specific in its destinations, um, and how it's to be used. And that was the, the topic of, uh, a very vigorous debate, as I said. And, uh, did I see, uh, Counsel Baxter, did you have a comment?
Yeah. So I just want to make it really clear that the allocations of the cultural funding have not been determined at this point as to which groups would be receiving.
funding have not been determined at this point as to which groups would be receiving those. That will be determined in the future, as the attorney mentioned, through budget process or through a direct action of council. So I just want to make that really clear.
That's correct. The individual organizations were not identified in the ballot measure, and that is a determination of the city council. And so although those organizations have been participant in the discussions to date, that's not a guarantee that that's, that they are the recipient of the ultimate funding. So with that, Esper roll call, please.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Noesworthy?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Brokey?
Yes. And the measure passes? We'll look forward to the second reading of this resolution in a couple of weeks, as I understand. With that, we'll move on to item twelve point one, in administrative section of our agenda, and that is discussion and possible action regarding the naming of natural surface trails in Horse Gulch. I'm not sure if that's Jose Madrigal, or if we move right into our Parks and Recreation Director to give us this presentation.
I'll pass it right on to Kathy Metz, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Excellent. Thank you, Jose.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. At the February ninth, twenty twenty-one study session regarding naming and renaming city assets, the city council requested that we bring information to you this evening regarding the naming and renaming of natural surface trails. We are in the process, the Parks and Recreation Department, for updating wayfinding signage in Horse Gulch. And we provided in your agenda packet a list of trail names within Horse Gulch, or thirty-five trails in Horse Gulch. And we reviewed these names through, throughout twenty twenty with the Natural Lands Preservation Advisory Board, the Community Relations Commission, and Durango Trails, which was formerly known as Trails Two Thousand. As the council is aware, previously, the Natural Lands Preservation Advisory Board did not necessarily follow the adopted nineteen ninety-six policy for naming and renaming Parks and Recreation facilities. However, they did defer to the naming of trails provided by, provided to the community by Durango Trails, or formerly Trails Two Thousand. And so we wanted to bring the names of the trails to the council this evening. The Natural Lands Preservation Advisory Board did ask that the, the trail names that were proposed to be changed would be taken to the Community Relations Commission, which did occur last year. And the Community Relations Commission didn't have any concerns with the names as they were existing or proposed to change with the, and, but did ask that we seek some advice from indigenous people from our community, and we did that. And the only name that did come up as a name of concern was Snake Charmer, and that has now since been renamed as Charm in the Horse Gulch Trail System. And so the city staff is, will be conducting a public engagement process later this year to update the current policy that we have regarding naming city assets. So it's in alignment with city council goals on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Until this policy is adopted, city staff is requesting that council approve the naming and renaming of the natural surface trails in Horse Gulch in order for staff to proceed with the wayfinding signage. So happy to answer any questions of the council regarding the process that we undertook or the proposed names.
Thank you, Kathy. And with that, is any further discussion or questions of council or any discussion about the actual names themselves? Boy, Kathy, you get off the hook pretty easy, but I was not expecting that. But with, but I do think that this is, you know, the first measure in our overall discussion that we had last, two weeks ago, relative to rename, or a week ago, actually, regarding renaming of a number of items within our park and conducting that study. This is just a simple process that's been underway for a period of time to, to address those trails. And I think you've done a very comprehensive job. I like the names personally, and invite other members of council to weigh in on it, or I would entertain a motion as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the naming and renaming of the natural surface trails in Horse Gulch.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we will, maybe we have a roll call, please.
Counselor Noesworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Brokey?
Yes. Thank you so much. With that, we'll move on to item twelve point two, which is discussion and possible action regarding the formation of a city and county subcommittee to discuss homelessness initiatives. City manager, yeah, thank you so much.
No worries. Mayor and council, Jose Madrigal, city manager, this is an item that was, came at the request of the county board of commissioners. They have set up a subcommittee for us to continue to meet, so that we can continue to meet and move forward and talk on homeless initiatives. Theirs was Commissioner Salca, the county attorney, Cheryl Rogers, and county manager Chuck Stevens. They asked if we would do the same thing, in having myself, Dirk Nelson, and a counselor be appointed to join them and being able to have regular subcommittee meetings to discuss the homeless initiatives that are ongoing.
Thank you, Jose. And with that, is tonight's discussion have the intent of assigning a counselor from this meeting to that committee?
Yes, sir. That's the pleasure of the council.
With that, we can have some discussion regarding the, if we want to participate in this initiative, as well as who would best represent the city, which counselor member would be interested in, to serve in that position. Any comments?
I have a question. I have a question for Jose. The length of term that the county commissioners are, are serving, recognizing that they've just gone through election and been seated?
There was no term given specifically on how long this committee would go. Chuck just had mentioned that to me in the conversation, that it was just appointments to go through. I wouldn't assume that this would be anything longer than a year. And if it was, I'm sure it would be revisited again. But there was no timeframe that was discussed specifically for how long this appointment would go.
Since, since we have an election coming up in April, would it be appropriate to either nominate either Counselor Baxter or myself, and possibly even in a temporary manner until the new council's seated, because we, because we have three openings?
I believe that's totally appropriate. Jose, you go ahead and weigh in.
Oh, I was gonna say, I don't believe that's my part to weigh in. I think that's the council's decision on what they feel to be most appropriate.
And a good question regarding the duration of this. I don't, this is not a permanent subcommittee. This is meant to be a task force, essentially. So I think it's urgent and certainly, but goes beyond the upcoming election, at which point certain of us are term limited and will not be participating. So I rule myself out of this opportunity. So with that, I think we have two potential candidates that could fulfill that role. Counselor Baxter?
Yeah, I just, I want to say that I really appreciate that the county asked for this. Really, this is a, it's a joint city-county issue, and it's going to be best solved by collaborating with the county and, and doing everything that we can together to make it happen. So I just want to say how much I appreciate that. And I think it's a good next step in where we're going with this project.
Thank you. Thank you. And if, you know, the first decision is to participate or not, and I think that's the substance of this. And then if we're comfortable naming a person a member of our council this evening, great. If not, we can, we can carry it over to a study session in a more relaxed atmosphere. But is there any volunteers, I should say, for this, for the separate?
I would be happy to do it. I don't know how Barbara feels, if Barbara's interested, if she has the time. And so I doesn't.
I would welcome Counselor Baxter's participation on this. And I think as Mayor Pro Tim, it sends a strong signal of the importance that we, as a city council, place on this.
Excellent. Well, Kim, if you're, if you're up to the task, thanks for that, for that volunteerism. And is there any discussion, any further discussion amongst council?
I would just add that I support it, and given, given the change in council. And it's, but I would reiterate that it's extremely important initiative and one that I am interested in participating in as we move forward and continue discussions.
Excellent.
And I may find that becoming mayor, Dean, you probably could give me the best advice on this. And Melissa, also, I might be overwhelmed, and I might be calling on somebody else to help out. So just FYI.
Feel free to reach out. It's always a, it's always a council effort. So, but I think we do need to participate. And so with that, I'd entertain a motion to, regarding the formation of a city council, city and county subcommittee to discuss homelessness initiatives, and accept the designated appointee to that committee.
So move.
Okay. Let me just reiterate the motion, then. It's, it's the, regarding, we approved the formation of a city council subcommittee to discuss homeless initiatives and appointed Mayor Pro Tim Kim Baxter to that position. So could I have a, do you accept that?
Thank you. Yes, so move.
Okay, it's been moved. Do I hear a second?
I'll second. Sorry.
Been moved and seconded. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Noesworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Brokey?
Yes. Thank you so much. And with that, we'll move on to twelve point three of the administrative agenda, which is Jose Madrigal, city manager, giving us a city update.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I do have two items to update the city council on. The first item we'll be updating on is Verde Brand Communications, giving a brief update to the city council based on the Durango Cares Update campaign that we're doing. So I do have Lauren Haber and Alexa McRoberts that are here to give the council a brief update of how we're doing on our Durango Cares and some of the cool initiatives that we're undertaking.
Awesome. Thanks, Jose. Yeah, this is Lauren here. I'm sorry I'm not on video. I'm actually having a little bit of Zoom trouble. But as Alexa gets our little presentation up to date, I'll just give you a little bit of background on Verde. We're a locally-based, integrated brand communications, public relations, and marketing agency. We just celebrated our twentieth anniversary, and we've supported over two hundred brands, probably, in the outdoor and active lifestyle space globally and nationally. So it's really exciting to be working for a local initiative here. So we're really happy to be working with you guys, and thank you for inviting us to this meeting. And then I think, can everybody see Alexa's screen?
It's up. Yeah, we're looking at it. Great.
Awesome. And I think you probably will see some of this imagery. I know that Jose and I believe Chris have it on their Zoom backdrop there. But yeah, we've, we've put together a very visual campaign. The overarching goal of this is to inform the community. You know, it's been a weird time, but we definitely want to get everyone kind of united around the mask wearing so that we can not only support the health of our community, but the health of small business. So that's kind of what the, I guess, the overarching goal of this campaign is. And then you'll see that unfold in some of the visuals that we'll present to you here in a few.
Yeah. So with the visuals, in the initial phase, we had a handful of creatives put together. So as you can see, we've got the mountain bike image, we've got a skier image, we've got some children, and we've got some seniors. So we have a handful of different options with different sayings, all related to the gritty Durango community. So it definitely takes a certain type of person to live here. And so we really wanted to pull that out of the campaign. And so to kick things off, we had a visual representation. So we have a toolkit that's online on the government website that people can go to and download Zoom backgrounds, or Instagram stories, or Facebook graphics. So the whole goal there was to get it up on the website so that everybody could access it, share it with the community. So we did see a lot of that, just businesses helping share that, which has been great. And so now, as we move into phase two, we'll start to roll out some physical collateral. So we'll see sidewalk decals, some banners, posters, and stickers. So that's kind of phase two, as we continue along with this campaign.
Yeah. And a lot of the inspiration for this campaign was kind of going back to that Durango grit, you know, like the kind of the foundational, the people who started this community, you know, like, you got to be tough enough to live here. So we definitely want to remind people of that inherent grit and tap into wearing a mask, even if you don't like it. Ultimately, it's going to get us to the next level so that we can all get what we want, which is our freedom. And that's kind of, you know, the whole premise behind this campaign.
Yeah. And so in addition to just having it be a visual campaign that you're going to see around town, we have a second phase, which we're actually announcing tomorrow. So we'll have a news, news announcement going out tomorrow morning. But we are introducing a, we're calling it Friday Durango Grit Gatherings. And so it's the city's way of supporting local businesses downtown in putting together an option for people to safely take, pick up, take out food, and also get to experience live music. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. But that's part of the overarching campaign as well.
Awesome. And then jumping ahead to the next slide. So we announced this originally, I believe, like, right after the new year. And we had a really overwhelming, overwhelmingly really good response from local businesses and, and the San Juan based public health. So we shared here a few screenshots of like, various ways that people have been sharing it on social media. But over, yeah, overall, I think it's been really well received. And I think the toolkit that lives on the city website has been really, really helpful. And obviously, I believe that a lot of businesses have been using it. So if anybody can and has anyone reach out, feel free to share that link. And Alex and I will make sure that that's available to you guys. So then a couple more slides here, just more examples of social media engagement. We've noticed like, ton of likes and, and comments, and I think more so than your average post. I think the visual element here is, has been really well received. You know, we have the skier, we've got the mountain biker. We also have the children and, and seniors as well. And then if you jump to the next slide, we also have translated these into Spanish. So we have, you know, these options as well. And again, available on the website for download, social media compatible, so anybody can use these public businesses and that kind of thing. And then again, in the, in the next phases of this, like, we'll hopefully translate it into potentially like native languages and things like that. But this is kind of how we kicked it off. And then jumping down, Alexa, if I'm getting ahead of your slides, let me know.
You're good.
Okay. In addition, so we've done traditional media relations in terms of like, sending it to the Herald and getting some, some coverage there. But we're also doing a paid advertising campaign with the Herald over the next eight weeks. So that'll be across their print, digital, like banner ads and on their website. So that is all in effect now. It'll also be in their newsletter. So you guys will begin to see this stuff rolling out all across town, both digitally, banners over Main Street. And we just actually got our shipment arrive of sidewalk stickers. And we're going to have stickers and like window decals for local businesses that they can, they can access at no charge. So we're working with the, Tim at the Business Improvement District and Locals First to get that stuff in the hands of local business owners. So that is one thing that we have underway, too. And then, Alexa, I'll kick it off to you for the gatherings.
Yeah. So we've been, you know, trying to think, how can we bring this to life? We want to, you know, the winter months are tough for a lot of businesses and we've been in close communication with the Business Improvement District as well as Local First and, you know, spitballing and thinking of ways in which we can support the community and do something to get people excited again, especially, you know, we thought about just like the traffic in Durango and like we had President's Weekend last weekend, which brought in a lot of people. And then we have spring break mid, mid to late March. And so we were thinking, we have about four weeks and we want to make sure we're giving the community, giving back, thanking people for masking up and doing something. We know, you know, we haven't had a lot of events this year. And so starting this Friday, the 19th, we'll have the first one. We have four Fridays kind of in mind. So this Friday, the 26th, March 6th, and then March 13th. And the whole idea is like mask up, head downtown, shop and eat from local businesses. So really what we're providing is we're closing down the side streets between Main Ave and Narrow Gauge on Ninth and Intend Street. So we've worked closely with Alex Wilkinson and the Business Improvement District to figure out the best blocks to shut down. And we've, you know, been in complete communication with all of the businesses that will be affected by those closures. There's not much in those two side blocks. And so we'll close down those streets from 4:00 to 7:00 PM on Friday and we'll have a small stage set up. We have musicians lined up for each of the blocks. So we'll have two stages, two separate musicians. And then 25 feet away from the stages, because of San Juan Public Health restrictions and COVID guidelines, we'll have 10 tables set up on each of the closed off blocks. So the tables are really just to provide the community somewhere to sit and to enjoy live music. We'll also have QR codes with menus from all the local restaurants on Main Street. So people can easily find the menus for all the local restaurants, place an order, pick up their food and then head back down to Ninth or 10th Street and listen to music while they enjoy takeout dining. So yeah, the first ones is Friday. And yeah, we're pretty excited about it. We'll have an announcement about it going out tomorrow morning, a press release. And then we also have this poster, which you can see here, that we will start posting around as well. So with all the details about the event. So I think that wraps it. Does anyone have any questions about the campaign thus far?
I have a question about social. I think the Friday sounds great. As someone who likes to see things going on downtown, I am curious about how the social distancing will also be maintained.
Yeah. Yeah, we have so, to explain that a little bit more, we have an event form that we filled out with San Juan Public Health to make sure that we abide by their rules. We'll have two staffers at each of the closed down blocks. So we'll have an entrance and an exit. So we have someone counting the number of people in that area. The number right now is really high that you can have an outside event. We don't anticipate we'll reach that. It's like 175 people. There's no way we're going to hit that and we'll definitely make sure we're maintaining that. But the idea will be that groups of people are each at each of the 10 tables. And then once someone leaves, it'll be our job to go through and sanitize. Everyone will be required to wear a mask. We'll have disposable masks at the front for people who don't show up with a mask. We'll have hand sanitizer throughout. And like I said, the stage is going to be 25 feet away from the closest tables. So.
Great. Sorry, I was checking my mute to make sure I was unmuted, but that's a great presentation and sounds like a fun event. So any, any further discussion by council? Any, any further questions? Do you know who's playing? What kind of music we're going to have?
I do. I don't remember off the top of my head because I've been in touch with a bunch of musicians for each of the weeks. But yeah, sorry. It's like Ryan and Nick are the two guys playing. So.
Put you on the spot for, but it's local musicians and.
Yeah, we have actually all the musicians lined up. It was, they were eager to sign up because everyone's looking for, for gigs. So it should be great.
Good. Well, we'll look forward to your, that'll be in the paper. You said news press release tomorrow or?
Tomorrow morning. Yep.
Excellent. Excellent. Well, thanks so much. I appreciate all your work. It's looking, it's, you know, it's a departure, graphic departure from what I thought we might have, but it's, I'm very appreciative of the concept and the, and the iterations that you prepared and now taking it to a real time level. Let's look forward to, to having you involved for another period of time here. So thanks so much. And with that, Jose, what else we have on the city update?
Just to, you know, want to thank the mayor and council for their support. This was an item or an idea that came from, from the city council about Durango Cares Program and just kind of a mention that the funding for Verde Brand coming in and helping us was using CARE Fund, CARES Act funding. So it was funding that we had specifically for giving back to the business community and helping them kind of stay safe and be able to bring back business within safe environments to the, to the Durango community. So just wanted to thank the mayor and council and just have one more update. I'm going to pass it to Chief Brammer to talk about, just to give a brief update, which I think is a, is a remarkable story about six officers and their going way above and beyond. And I think it's a great story to share with the council and also the public. So chief.
Thank you, Jose. Mayor and city council, I just want to take this opportunity to say first off, thank you to the city manager for allowing us to have this platform build, tell this story. Last Wednesday, six of our officers responded to an apartment complex on a suspicious call where a neighbor had reported that there was a door, it was a jar and that was unusual at one of their neighbor's house. The first officer to arrive on scene was in training. It's Officer Dylan Miller and he was with his training officer, Corporal Thompson. They began the initial investigation and found out that this person who lived in this apartment with the jar door was suffering from some prior health issues. As they continued their investigation, two other officers who were in training, Officer Colberg and Officer Robinson also arrived with their training officers, Officer Engel and Officer Anderson all arrived there and they began to just continue that investigation. As they approached the door and they started seeing if there was anybody, what was going on, the situation that was there, they could hear gurgling and some moaning coming from inside the apartment. They established an exigency at that point. They entered the apartment and found a male who was pretty much unconscious at that time. He, it was very evident that he'd been down on the ground for quite some time. He was not cognizant. He was convulsing a little bit and he was not alert to anything that was going on. So they began providing first aid immediately to him and also summons Durango Fire Protection District medics to arrive on scene. In a combination of efforts between our officers and EMTs, they were able to transfer this, this man to the hospital and give him a fighting chance and basically saving his life at that point. So we just wanted to commend all of those officers and the fire department for their efforts that day and just showing that the sanctity of life is something that we take for granted sometimes, but it's something that we continue to strive for. And our officers take high, high pride and effort in their duties every day. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. That's, that's, that's great. And yeah, what a, what a, what a great story. And that's, you continue to amaze us and make us proud. So thanks, thanks for your efforts. Any further, any other items, Jose?
No, sir. That concludes my city update. And just again, thank you to Verde Communications for coming on. And then also chief, thank you so much for that story. And please continue to thank the officers for a job well done and really making the Durango PD and the city of Durango proud with their actions. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks so much. With that, we move on to council reports and actions. And I think the first thing we became aware of tonight is that our city manager isn't as young as he thought he was. And it's his birthday and, you know, we had a kind of a, I had a mental goal of getting him home by nine o'clock, but we haven't succeeded in that effort. So, but Jose, happy birthday. Welcome to your first birthday in Durango, Colorado. It's way better than having a birthday in Texas. I can get, if we can get you home on time. So, but congratulations and we won't make you tell how, how old you are. But you have had your vaccine, but that's not indicative of your age. As is for some of us, you were a first responder. So you got, got first dibs on the vaccine, which is an important thing to know that the city manager, you know, did, we didn't get any photos of him having his vaccine, nor are we going to get any photos of him eating birthday cake, I don't think either. But thanks for supporting the vaccine effort and growing older. I might start off with a couple of things. One is tomorrow morning is going to be our, our employee appreciation. We used to call it a breakfast, but it's more of an event because it's virtual. And so Mayor Pro Tem Baxter and I will be participating in a, in a staff wide, that's like 350 people plus on a Zoom for breakfast, if you can imagine that. And there'll be, our goal is to show our appreciation, council's appreciation for our huge staff and everything they've been through this particular year especially. And so with that come a little, a few door prizes and recognitions and, and some of the normal awards that are given each year by, by staff, to staff. So, so Counselor Baxter and myself are going to be anxious to participate and get up early to, get up as early as staff, I guess, is what it takes to participate in that event. So look forward to that. It's going to be a couple hours tomorrow morning. And the other thing I'd might like to mention, I don't have the details on it, but I see Amber Blake is still with us. If anybody has details on the Bike to Work Day, that's going to be happening next week, I believe. And so maybe we can have an announcement of that by whoever is available to do that relative to the time and location for that event. With that, other counselors, we'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Baxter.
Well, Amber had just shown up, so I didn't know if you wanted to have her say something.
Amber, are you, are you with us? And can you speak to that date for the Bike to Work Day?
I can. The Winter Bike to Work Day will be taking place next Friday and it's a virtual event. So we are encouraging all of our participants to register online or at the Transit Center. You can go on down to the Transit Center. The first hundred participants will receive a hoodie and those can be picked up at the Transit Center parking window. So all of the information is on the website and next Friday.
Excellent. So if you do want to ride your bike and show up at the Transit Center, you can, you can get a media award for that. But yeah, for those of us that are commute to work on bicycles in the middle of the winter, this is one of my favorite events that started, I believe by Amber years ago. And so that's why I picked on her to talk, have that discussion. So, so back to Counselor, Mayor Pro Tem Baxter.
Thank you, Dean. I had a wonderful conversation today. I was invited by the fifth grade Cub Scouts who are working on their Arrow of Light to come and chat with them. And the things that they wanted to talk about were meeting with a government or community leader and learning about their role in the community, as well as discussing important issues facing our community and how the government and the community work together on that. It was a fabulous conversation. There were eight, nine, 10 young people and as well as their scout leaders and some of those were parents. So it was a very interesting conversation. They were very actually well informed about things that go on in our community and asked very insightful and thoughtful questions. And it was just wonderful. Someday down the road, those fifth graders may be a city council person. So that was great fun.
Thank you, Kim. Move on to Counselor Yussa.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to do just, I'm going to make it brief, but talk about CML. I attended the CML Policy Committee meeting as the city of Durango representative. And there's a couple interesting bills that are being considered for this legislative session that I just wanted to make sure council and staff were aware of. One, Counselor, Mayor Pro Tem Baxter, you had asked me to report on this and kind of provide an update on the affordable housing. It's inclusionary zoning to include rental housing development. It's an interesting one. It is regarding rental housing. And just to be brief, there's a big history here of this ordinance or of this bill, but staff is requesting approval for CML initiated legislation to correct statutes, to clarify that inclusionary zoning for new rental housing developments is not a form of rent control, otherwise prohibited by state law. So they want to overturn previous decision made for the city of Telluride back in 2000. So it'll be interesting. CML did initiate this legislation last year, but due to the short session, they did, it didn't, it didn't pass. And so they're hoping to bring this back next year. So this could have an impact for our ability for rental housing developments. Another really interesting one that I think you guys might be, that's very, was very intriguing and had a lot of discussion around was transportation funding. They are aware of one main transportation bill, which is still in very draft stages and they're keeping it really close to their chest. So CML doesn't know that much about it, but they do know that the Joint Budget Committee approved $130 million for distribution of funding for transportation throughout the state. There's talk that a require, a portion of that funding might go, be required to go to multimodal funding, but they haven't defined multimodal yet. And again, the details of the draft are still being held very close to the vest. They're talking about the, the way that new, new revenue would be also raised for this, which would be raised through a gas tax, a fee on Amazon, Lyft and other delivery services, and a fee on electric vehicles. So it was very interesting, interesting discussion to hear people talk about it. They were saying that the gas tax hasn't been looked at for years. And so there was quite a few people in support of that. And then they were also suggesting that electric vehicles, you know, are going to be a larger and larger portion as we move forward. And there was support by quite a few people that they too should pay their way. I think the league is basically they're closely monitoring this. And so we will be reporting, meeting again in March and I'll report again on that in March. And there was two other interesting ones. One was a sustainability one, management of plastic products, a bill that would repeal the prohibition of local governments' ability to manage or prohibit the use of plastic materials beginning July of 2023. So this was a very interesting discussion on basically banning plastics or charging a fee for plastics. And lots of interesting discussion around, some suggesting that this is a kind of a one size fits all approach and it should be left up to the local governments to decide based on their community and what they know about their communities. And then there are others saying that the external impacts of plastic bag use goes way beyond local limits and issues, environmental issues such as this need to be, have a statewide policy floor. So there's a lot of back and forth on that. And we don't know exactly what the bill is going to say. So CML is recommending staff discretion on this bill and I will be watching it closely because I think it's extremely interesting and I'll bring information back to council on that. And the last one that I definitely need to discuss because it's time is of the essence and I need to see if councils, this council supports this one, it's for the Southwest Impact Fund. CML is supporting the Southwest Impact Fund. You all remember it. It was the old EIF Fund. And the Southwest Impact Fund, formerly known as EIF, is, is an approach to, and as I talked about it earlier when we were talking about fire mitigation, fill the gaps for scaling forest health treatments to the level required to meaningfully reduce the risk of wildfire in the region by providing financing options. And the way it relates to us is that the, we, what, what they're seeking is the ability to create an authority, which would be, which we would be involved in, we would be partners in that authority with the county. And we would establish an IGA to create this, excuse me, to, to start this authority. Other communities would be able to join it later, but this is just a start. And what SIA, Southwest Impact Fund wants from the city of Durango and from city council is they would like to, number one, get a work session on our books as soon as possible to give an update on where they are with the Southwest Impact Fund. They would like to reiterate to the city that they have CML support regarding a bill to providing increased options for financing of forest health. And they would also like, you know, included in that bill is the city of Durango and the county confirming whether we would vote on whether we want to inform an authority with regards to Southwest Impact Fund with the county. And we would need an IGA with the county to start and. And we would need an IGA with the county to start and other local governments. So a board would be formed. There would be two people from the county, two people with the city. They'd be seeking grant funding. We had previously spoke of supporting this IGA and this Impact Fund with a forty-five thousand dollar commitment from the City of Durango and the county. We've received a letter as a city for that commitment. Jose has it in hand. And I guess the, the message that I'm getting from the Impact Fund, the creators of the Southwest Impact Fund, is that this is a time-sensitive request that they want to start working on these fire mitigation efforts in early of 2022, and they need to get the authority and the agreements in place in order to do so. So they are asking for our support for that. And again, it kind of comes under the guise of both CML and SWF. So I needed to see if there's council support for that. They actually asked me to testify for, you know, as a member of CML in regards to this bill. But I did tell them that I needed to make sure that I had city council support before I would be willing to do anything of the sort.
Melissa, when they sat, when they came with us for a study session fairly recently, I, all these things were discussed, but I thought we left it that they were going to come back to us with what that IGA would look like and what our, our responsibilities and commitments would be. So I thought we were waiting to hear from them about something that we could discuss and then decide upon.
They need help with, and I am by no means fully informed on all the intricacies of all of this, but from what I understand from them, what they need from us as a council, if we want to support this Impact Fund region-wide and be the initial participants in the IGA, is that they need our help, and they need us to prioritize this IGA with Dirk, our city attorney, to help them create that. It has, it thus far has not been a priority. We have a lot of things on our table. And so if council supports this and supports the bill with CML, then, then that IGA is basically a first step that we would need to direct staff to prioritize.
And if I remember correctly, we talked about possibly budgeting forty-five thousand dollars for this combined effort. I think that's what the county also put in. But I recognize needing the help. I think the other question that they were going to address is how the different areas would be determined and the funding secured to do those larger area fire mitigations. And I think that was an outstanding question from their presentation as well.
They talked about that, and, oh, sorry, I, I was just gonna answer that one, if I may. And again, I'm not an expert. That's why they want a study session, again, to answer some of these questions. But I'll do my best. From what I understood is they said that this board that they want to create with members of the city and members of the county would be the, that's where those discussions would take place, to prioritize treatment areas and, and, and funding around those.
It seems like, you know, what they're asking simply, if we're in favor, and I don't, you know, I think we'll we'll get some head nods. We can't make any decisions in, in a non-agendized issue. But I think this sounds like something we have continued to support. But I would ask Jose as to whether we can schedule a study session. And as I understand it, Melissa, they want to present once again to us. And the timing of that study session might be prior to, in, in preparation for, for discussion with the county commissioners. And I believe that, that meeting was canceled and rescheduled for March twenty-fifth, I believe, or thereabouts. So if I'm reading the tea leaves right, it's, it would be we would have better awareness of what we, we would want to suggest and, and share with the county commissioners during that potential meeting and make sure it's on the agenda for that, that county commissioner joint session.
And just, you're, you're absolutely right, Mayor. And one of the thing, couple of other things that I didn't get to communicate, that I didn't share is that their, their plan that they're proposing in response to what you were suggesting, councillor Nozworthy, is that they're looking at about sixty-five thousand acres, and they do have maps in their documentation that shows kind of potentially high-risk areas that they'd love to be considered for priority areas. And they're surrounding, all, all kind of areas surrounding the city, including Trimble, Viasito, east of Bayfield, and out at Hermosa. So you know, those are kind of some of the purple areas that I saw highlighted in the, the initial maps that I was reviewing.
So am I correct in understanding that this, this organization of this this, this organization, organization, this organization would be the conduit to additional state funding?
Absolutely.
Therefore, you know, I, I would suggest we see what it takes to get us on a a study session prior to our meeting with county commissioners on March twenty-fifth. So perhaps we can ask Jose to take a look at that, find out the specifics of who would be presenting to us again, and find out what's different than what we heard last time.
Or if it's the same and we support it, move forward. They need an answer, and they, we, they need to know where we're going.
So is there anybody that's, that has no support or that would not support that, that kind of a endeavor? A potential MOA with the county? So it sounds like it's something we, we, we need to put on the agenda and, and move forward. So if we can report back. And Melissa, thanks for being our liaison to the, the policy group of CML. It's, it's, it's wonderful. And, and as we all will, we'll continue to lobby for more transit funding from the state of Colorado to backfill what we know is gonna be a deficiency upcoming in, at the City of Durango. So, thank you. Chris, do you have anything to report in?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to announce a new program I'm helping to launch in conjunction with the Powerhouse Science Center and Durango Learning Lab. As you guys know, many of our nine R students have been struggling through this year to maintain the grades and enthusiasm about classes and self-confidence and things like that. While they've been out of school with COVID realities or in and out of school with that. My own son Dylan was having issues relative to that himself, and we had to seek out tutoring. And as you all know, that's pretty price sensitive, expensive in the community here. And so we were able to fund through Help with the Durango Learning Lab, a, a program where all nine R high school students can now receive one-on-one private tutoring if they'd like at as little as no cost to them, and if they qualify, and to help them through this time. And so that program is launched. It's up and running, and you can find out details at POWSCI.org or POWSCI.org in their, in their learning center there. So just wanted to announce that. I hope people will sign up and take advantage of it. Oh, and happy birthday, Jose.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris. That's, that's huge. And it's really important for all our kids, especially those that can't afford tutoring during this really critical time, and that gives the parents a little relief as well. So, so thanks. With that, councillor Nozworthy?
Yeah, I attended the, it's a consortium. It's called the Southwest Colorado Opioid Overdose Prevention Consortium, and it's a group of many mental health and concerned citizens in the, in the community, really looking to come up with the, an analysis of the the gaps that are, the needs that are, that are present in the community, the gaps, and then starting to look at it significant funding. And this, last week, it was quite interesting. We had a, a Native American professor really take us through a history of treatment of Indigenous people in the community, in this region, in the Four Corners area, and how that plays out in generational trauma. And, and I will say it was quite informative for me. I, I learned a fair bit. And there are several folks in the, on this consortium who are Indigenous spoke about their experiences. So it was also a learning opportunity. But this group meets once a month, and ultimately, we will be looking at finding the resources to really develop a robust opioid overdose prevention program in the community. That was a big effort. And then also, I, both, both Melissa and I heard from a constituent really concerned about our effort to help small businesses in, in addition to wearing masks in the Durango Cares activity. One of the concerns, this person's concern was about how can we help people in the hospitality industry, so both restaurants, hotels, even the ski resorts? Maybe get some recognition for their importance and help prioritize the possibility of them being vaccinated sooner as we're approaching the tourism season. So I did call the mayor and ask about approaching the Colorado Association of Ski Towns on that, and what would be the appetite for discussing that with the governor's office. So I did want to follow up on that request from one of our constituents. And Dean, I don't know if you have any follow-on to that request?
I sure do. I sure do. And yeah, if, do you have any other things?
No, I think that's good.
Yeah, thanks so much. So for the public listening in that might be interested in that, what, you know, the request was for essentially, can we get vaccinations prioritized for our hospitality workers, those being, those people that serve us in bars and restaurants, as well as those people in, in hotels that are cleaning rooms, and specifically with the level of urgency towards spring break and the summer season of tourism coming to Durango. So, yeah, I, I did forward that request on to our executive director at CAST, Colorado Association of Ski Towns, to see what other communities were, were doing. And at four o'clock today, I spoke with the governors. I'm a member of this Governor's Ski Industry COVID Policy Group, and so I was able to talk with everybody from Steamboat to Crested Butte and everybody in between about this request too. And so, a, a, as well as the representatives from the governor's office. And so they there is discussion ongoing about it. There is a, a priority. They will be coming up in priority very, very soon, but perhaps not soon enough. So we don't want to jump, be line jumpers essentially in terms of prioritization over any other worthy individual or profession to be involved in it. You might, the governor came under great criticism for prioritizing teachers. And so it is a political issue, but I think there is a mounting pressure to authorize vaccines for those people that are, have high public contact, and in our case, support our economy. So that is in motion, and the governors, we will, CAST will be presenting a request, and I have already launched that at, at the governor's office. So hopefully that's, we'll get some reaction to that soon. And if we want to write a letter to the governor's office directly, they would encourage us to do that. So if there is support amongst council for that, that request, we can, we can initiate that next week. It's fairly harmless request. It is political, so I don't know how, how much response we will get. And we will probably get a response that he has in fact prioritized, and it will be coming up very soon. But I think the, the urgency will be recognized if, if there is a, a simple request made of the governor. So I would encourage that. And if I can follow up with, with staff and get that letter drafted, if there's no
Do you know when, when you anticipate CAST making a decision whether or not they'll go forward with this request?
I don't. It went out today, as you know, in about four o'clock. And so she, the executive director is kind of polling a number of the other communities to see what the level of appetite for that is. It's a lot of the same people that I was on the conference Zoom with at four o'clock. So there was general interest in doing that, acknowledging that public, you know, those members are coming up soon in the, in the existing prioritization. So whether there's any reprioritization necessary is the real question. So, yeah, Kim?
So I, I, I think that giving vaccines to all of our people is really important. And I'm a little concerned that this is staring one industry. And so, for example, City Market, I don't think we want City Market to have to close because their employees are unvaccinated, whereas the hotels can stay open because theirs are. So I'm a little concerned about how this, how this favors certain industries over others. The, you know, tourism, yes, is probably about one-third of our, of our business, but there's another two-thirds out there. That's really important also. So I think we should consider this and think pretty deeply about, you know, then do we add grocery store workers into this mix too? Because we all need food. Especially in this COVID, when we can't go out to restaurants as much. So just a thought.
That's a great question, Kim. And as, it's my understanding that grocery store workers are included in, in this effort. Anything, anybody that's providing food, whether it's retail or you know, in the case of a grocery store, or prepared food in the case of a restaurant, would be included in this measure. So and I think maybe the appropriate thing is to hear back, as I have requested from the governor's office, a guy named Xander, who's awesome, a guy that, that will respond to our request and actually detail what the current schedule is and who will be vaccinated when, and in what order. So we get an inclusive list of what, what workers would be included in the next phase of vaccinations, along with our bartenders and so forth, to see how urgent it might be. And if I can get that response in the next couple of days, I can circulate it. And then if it's appropriate, we can, we can formulate a specific request.
Sure. And I think that that would be better to have the actual information about what the bill would be or what the rule would be before we step up and write a letter when we don't know what we're talking about. Because it just brings to mind so many things. You know, we have bike shops. We have ski shops that all deal with tourism, and that's all tourism trade. And so I, I would like to know the particulars.
Absolutely. Well, let me, let me find out that from the governor's office and and respond, and the, the general response throughout the state was, we, nobody wants to be a line jumper. But these, it is relative to our economy. And, but and then the general response is it is coming soon. In any case, and so it's a matter of whether it can be accelerated in any fashion. So I will, I'll, I'll follow up and get back. Yeah. Barbara?
May I just make an announcement about vaccines? The community-wide effort that is ongoing, it's been going on for five weeks now. This Saturday, provided the vaccines make it into town with the storm, the plan is to vaccinate, give five hundred people their second dose and five hundred people their first dose this coming Saturday. So we're moving up to a thousand people being inoculated on one Saturday, one day a week. So that's, that's one effort. There's other places as well. And so again, encouragement along with wearing masks to seriously please consider getting vaccinated when it's the appropriate time.
That's great that you guys are doing that. That's a major accomplishment. Thank you.
I, the credit goes to the community volunteers who are organizing it and making it happen, not just signing up, not just those that work on Saturday, but those during the week that work to make it happen. It's a huge effort.
Yeah, and again, to Karen Zink, her linkage to Jose one, one Monday morning, and, and this thing kind of got launched with the city's assistance as well. So I'd like to acknowledge the staff, city staff's role in, in, in making this happen as well. So so with that, I'll, I'll end with just one, one other request. And I got a call from our good friend out at SCOT, David Thibodeau, and he is looking to apply for a grant from CDHPNE for a, it's a special grant regarding composting. The SCOT is partnering with Farm to Table to do a commercial composting operation and, which is intended to be much more environmentally sound than their, their current operation, which is a lot of their waste is taken out to farm which is a lot of their waste is taken out to farm fields and fed to cows and so forth. And this would actually create a composting methodology via a grant that would be from the state. So a big part of that was competing for that grant would be a letter of support from the City of Durango. So I would ask if there's general consensus to do that. And if there's, I just put out an email the other day to to brief you on that. And if there's any hesitation to to do to do that in the interest of the city and our the businesses and the innovation that they bring to this particular seeking this out this particular grant, please let me know. If not, I'll I'll look forward to drafting a letter that we can send in support of of their grant request being that's SCOT and Farm to Table nonprofit. So if there's any discussion or additional information anybody needs, I'll be happy to get it for them. So seeing none, yeah, I see a thumbs up from Barb. If there's anybody that does, there's Kim, you got a thumbs up. I see one from Chris. So and Melissa's looking, you know, it it seems like motherhood and apple pie. I think it's a really great thing and brings a fairly creative solution to a great industry and their byproduct in our community. So I will I'll get that letter of support written. And thank you so much. If there's no other issues to be discussed this evening, it's 9:41. Now hereby adjourn this meeting at Durango City Council, February 16, 2021.